The regular meeting of the Board of Education of the San Francisco Unified School District for February 11th, 2025 is now called to order at 5:01 PM. Mr. Steele, could you take a roll call attendance, please?
Thank you, Vice President. Commissioner Alexander?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Gupta?
Here.
Commissioner, Vice President Healy?
Here.
Commissioner Ray?
Here.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Here.
President Kim, thank you.
President Kim has an excused absence for a family emergency.
Correct, noted.
There are two items under Section A General Agenda of, uh, Section A General Information of the Agenda that were clerical errors. Number three, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, and number eight, general information. I'm removing these from the Agenda. Childcare will be provided from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM for children ages three to 10. The childcare is just across the hall in the enrollment center here on the first floor. At this time, before the Board goes into closed session, I call for any speakers to the closed session items listed in the Agenda. There will be a total of five minutes for speakers.
We do have a speaker, I can go grab him right now.
Thank you very much.
Good evening Commissioners, uh, my name is Josh Davidson. I am the chef for the school district and also the acting chief steward for SIU Local 10-1 here in the school district. And, uh, I'm here tonight to speak about item six on your closed session agenda, your conference with labor negotiators. Our last meeting with the district's negotiating team was on January 23rd. On that day, we made, uh, we scheduled another bargaining date for January 29th, which the district canceled telling us they had not had time to review our proposals. We asked for new dates on, uh, February 3rd and on February 10th yesterday, and both times they told us they still have not had time to review our proposals. Uh, the proposals aren't complicated, so, uh, I'm hoping that you can encourage them when they come before you tonight. Well, I'm hoping first of all, that when they come before you tonight, they'll have a different story for you, right? That would be the ideal outcome, that they've actually done their homework at this point. But if they haven't, I hope that you will encourage them to do so. We'd really like to get this wrapped up. We don't want to be in reopening negotiations all the way until the successor contract negotiations start. We expect to sunshine that in March. And, we really, like, we're ops people in 10-1. We want to spend the next couple of months helping our members and our departments sort of navigate the new budget and staffing reality that's coming, right? We don't want to, like, get all this stuff mashed up together because that's a great way to get everybody frustrated and not working to, like, get us where we need to go. So, I just have come to ask you, please encourage your labor relations and human resources and budget folks to do their homework and come back to us with dates as soon as possible. Thanks very much.
That concludes in-person public comment for closed session.
Thank you. Is there any, um, remote public comment? For our virtual participants, if you care to give a public comment on any of the closed session items, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised. Please note, the Board will take a roll call vote on the recommended student expulsions when we reconvene to open session. I now recess this meeting at 5:05 PM. SFUSD will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language ASL interpreter services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot streamtext dot net slash player question mark event equal sign SFUSD dashboard. Attendees who wish to provide public comments to the Board and would like an ASL interpreter can use the Q&amp;A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle and list the item or items on the Agenda they would like to comment on. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and the Board. When it is the attendee's opportunity to provide comment, the Zoom hosts will promote the attendee to panelist and enable the attendee's video. Translation, go ahead, please.
Thank you. SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please enter the number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenas noches. El Distrito de la Unified School of San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. If you need interpretation for me at Google Meet, por favor, mark the siguiente number telefónico, seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres, uno, nueve, tres, ocho, dos, nueve, seis, siete, seis. Por favor, introduce the key word. Seis, seis, cinco, nueve, nueve, seis, nueve, siete, seis, seguido de la tecla numeral o tecla. Gracias. Cantonese interpreter, please, thank you.
Good evening, San Francisco Unified School District. We will provide a live service for the今晚的会议提供广东话的全集服务的. If you have any questions, you can call Google Meet. The number is, uh, the number is, uh, one, four, eight, four, eight, five, four, three, three, two, eight. The number is, uh, one, four, eight, four, eight, nine, nine, five, six, please. Thank you.
Thank you. President Kim, that concludes translation services.
I wasn't sure if I was actually supposed to hit the gavel, but hello, everyone. Thank you for taking your seats. I'm not going to do the positive behavior narration. I see this person sitting down, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Very mindful. Uh, apologies for the delay here, um, we were wrapping up our closed session items. I'm following on item C1, vote on student expulsion matters, um, and I'll report out from closed session. Thank you. Item C1 of closed session, vote on student expulsion matters. I move, uh, approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement for one high school student matter number 2024 dash 202520 dash 20. For the remainder of the spring 2025 semester, the student will be placed at Civic Center during the expulsion period. Can I have a second?
All right. Second.
Roll call, Mr. Steele?
Thank you, President Kim. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Healy, Vice President Healy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Kim?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement for one high school student matter number 2024 dash 2025 dash 21. One calendar year from the date of approval for the expulsion. The student will be placed at Civic Center during the expulsion period. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Steele?
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Kim?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement for one middle school student matter number 2024 dash 2025 dash 22. For one calendar year from the date of approval of the expulsion, during the suspended expulsion period, student will attend a conference of middle school from two school options provided by SFUSD. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Steele?
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Kim?
Yes.
Seven.
In three matters of anticipated litigation, the Board by a vote of seven eyes... And, sorry, I'll repeat that. In three matters of anticipated litigation, the Board by a vote of seven eyes gives direction to the General Counsel. In one matter of public employee discipline dismissal release, the Board by a vote of seven eyes approved a proposed resignation. That is not actually the case, never mind. In accordance with Education Code 44954, the Board took action in closed session to issue notices to 258 temporarily certificated employees that they will be released at the conclusion of the 2425 school year. The Board recognizes and appreciates the dedication and contributions of these educators during their time with the district. We thank them for their service to our students and community. The motion to approve the release of, uh, and appro- the motion to approve the release was approved by a vote of six, uh, six eyes and one no, uh, with Commissioner Fisher voting no. Pursuant to Education Code 44929 dot 21B, the Board took action to non-reelect 79 probationary certificated employees effective at the conclusion of the 2425 school year. The affected employees will receive written notice of the Board's decision in accordance with legal requirements. The motion to approve the non-relection of certificated employees was approved by a vote of six one with Commissioner, uh, Fisher voting no. That concludes our readout from closed session. And I'll move to item D1, land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rama Tishaloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Rama Tishaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rama Tish community and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. I'll move to item two, approval of board minutes, regular meetings of January 14th, 2025, and monitoring workshop of January 28th, 2025. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
Any changes to, uh... Any changes to, uh, the board minutes? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Steele?
Thank you. On the minutes, Student Delegate Montgomery?
Yes.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Kim?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome to today's meeting. The SFUSD Board of Education follows a student-ackun focused governance model. Based on community input, the Board has adopted our vision, values, goals, and guardrails. In order to increase the portion of board meeting time we spend on student outcomes, every other regular meeting is a monitoring workshop. This model also calls on the Board to empower the superintendent to take full ownership of the strategies used to reach those goals within the guardrail set by the Board. As we implement this new governance framework, the Board will continue to adopt new systems, routines, and policies that improve student outcomes. We encourage the public to follow this work on our website at sfusd.edu/governance as we commit to finding new and improved ways to more meaningfully engage with staff, students, and families. With that, I will turn it to Dr. Sue for Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Kim. So, I just want to share that, um, well, first of all, I want to wish, uh, everyone a happy Lunar New Year, as well as a happy, uh, Black History Month, and it's great to see so many people in the audience today. Uh, next slide, please. As a school district, we celebrate all diversity and we recognize the importance, relevance, and origins of our Black History Month, as well as our Lunar New Year. Uh, we aim to lift up the rich history of, of all of our communities, uh, particularly in this month, our African-American students and families, and the brilliance of, um, our Black voices and Black excellence. I will say that it's not just in February that we celebrate Black excellence, we should be doing it all year long. However, throughout this month, um, our schools are holding a number of wonderful events that I encourage members of our commission to join, um, as well as members of, um, our community. Uh, things like field trips, read-ins, curriculum integration that our wonderful teachers are doing, they're doing art projects, uh, lots of different types of assemblies, um, and, uh, cultural performances. So please be sure to check out our website for more information on our Black History Month celebrations and other resources. I also want to take the opportunity to reiterate San Francisco Unified School District's commitment to protecting and defending the rights of our immigrant students, families, and staff. We know that our immigrant families and students are sensitive to a lot of things that's happening in our world right now. And I want to reassure families that we are providing lots of trainings and lots of information to all of our site leaders so that they are prepared for any potential law enforcement visits, particularly from immigration officials. San Francisco schools will remain a safe haven for students regardless of immigration status. Despite any uncertainty or challenges that may arise, we at SFUSD have policies in place to protect the rights of our students, families, and staff. As a sanctuary school district, SFUSD holds every young person's constitutional right to feel safe and supported and welcomed in their school. And we strive to expand the scope of sanctuary to all of our families in our community. Please go to our website and learn more about all of the different resources and policies that we have around immigration policies and services that families can access. I also want to say that SFUSD's board policy and California state law affirms the rights of our students and staff to learn and grow in a welcoming and inclusive atmosphere. This includes our LGBTQ plus students and educators and staff and families. Leaning into and celebrating our diversity helps all of our students to feel seen, heard, and respected. This includes our district's transgender students and all of our LGBTQ plus students and families. And we continue to very much celebrate all of the diversity, um, in our schools, as we have for the last three decades. SFUSD will observe Pride in April, which will feature our second annual Superintendent's Rainbow Read Aloud to promote literacy and highlight stories of resilience and acceptance. We are also excited to share that we have successfully launched the Queer and Transgender Parent Advisory Council, that I had the opportunity to, to be, to, uh, to open up the inaugural meeting several months ago. I'm so excited for the work of this, um, Parent Advisory Council. I'm excited to also announce that we have launched the 2025 Superintendent's 21st Century Scholarship Application. The scholarship will be granted to six graduating SFUSD seniors who accept, who exemplify a particular strength in one or more of the characteristics of SFUSD's graduate profile. Winners will each receive a $3,000 scholarship and will be honored, um, at an event in May. Last week was National School Counseling Week, February 3rd to the 7th, and I want to take this opportunity to thank our amazing school counselors who play such an important role in the lives of our students. National School Counseling Week is a special time to highlight the tremendous impact that school counselors can have in helping students achieve their school success, but also mental well-being. This year's theme was "School Counseling Helping Students Thrive." I want to acknowledge that we have plans, oops, I want to acknowledge that as we are planning for school staffing next year, we recognize the many contributions our school counselors have, um, in supporting our students. And as I said earlier, happy Lunar New Year to everyone. Hopefully, this year will bring you lots of prosperity, good health, and for our students, great academic success. Many schools throughout our district are celebrating Lunar New Year with parades, tea houses, um, tea house ceremonies, and other colorful events, um, as they welcome in the Year of the Snake. On Friday, I had the opportunity to join the Tea House Event at Sutro and had a wonderful time visiting with our beautiful students. And a number of our other schools are marching in the Chinese New Year Parade this coming Saturday, February 15th, so please come out and join our students, teachers, I know many commissioners, and myself will be there, um, at the parade. And the highlight, the highlight of my week is to visit schools and to be in community with our students, our educators, and, um, uh, our families. So recently, I had the opportunity to join Commissioner Weisman Ward at Claridan Elementary School, where their Japanese bilingual bicultural program celebrated Fred Korematsu Day of, of civic liberties and the Constitution. Um, there was a school assembly and the students, um, in the fourth grade did a play that, um, talked about Fred Korematsu's life and, um, the work that he did to support our Japanese residents. And then this past Sunday, Vice President Healy and I had the pleasure of experiencing the amazing James Lake Middle School students' performance of the SpongeBob Musical. We were extremely blown away with their artistic abilities, um, definitely speaks to, once again, our amazing educators and the power and beauty of the art. Thank you to our families who applied on time, uh, for, uh, our enrollment, uh, that ended on January, uh, 31st, um, for next school year. Uh, I just wanted to let you all know that families who applied on time will receive their school assignment by mid-March. Uh, one school assignments for on-time applicants are shared in March. Applicants who do not receive their first choice, uh, will automatically get on the waitlist and will be assigned a second choice, and that will continue, um, for five rounds. Um, and, uh, if you are on the waitlist, please go on our website to learn more about what you can do. And as a reminder, schools and office will be closed next Monday for President's Day. And I want to end my remarks, um, by showing some recent joyful moments that I had at our school. This is at, um, Sutro. I just want to recognize that we are facing really challenging times in our district, but at the heart of all, all of our decisions, particularly mine and our team, uh, within Central Office, we have to keep our children, our students, our families at the core. And, and of course, when we do that, I truly believe that we will be able to land at a budget that prioritizes our student outcomes and, um, support our, our staff, um, in the process. So, I'm going to show this little clip here.
Here's some recent bright spots in SFUSD. Students at Claire Lilienthal Elementary School celebrated the start of Lunar New Year with traditional Korean performances. Over at Jean Parker Elementary School, they also celebrated Lunar New Year with a lion dance performance. And over at Alvarado Elementary School, they honored the Year of the Snake for Lunar New Year by hosting a parade. Over in the Bayview, our Bayview Elementary Schools, including Drew College Prep Elementary School, hosted the 40th anniversary of the African-American Read-In for Black History Month. Also to celebrate Black History Month, over at Willie Brown Middle School, the Moldovi Dance Group taught students step dance. Our high school students at Ruth Asawa had their annual community service day. Here, students are helping clean up Corona Heights Park. At Sutro Elementary School, they hosted their annual Lunar New Year Tea House. And over at Claridan Elementary School, they honored Fred Korematsu Day with a play that they've been doing for over 10 years, as well as hearing from Fred's daughter, Dr. Karen Korematsu, and having a Q&amp;A with the lawyer who led Fred's case. And the San Francisco Giants and Giants Community Fund hosted 150 CTE pathway students from seven high schools for their first-ever High School Enrichment Day, where they learned about careers in sports off the playing field. Last but not least, students at Carver Elementary School were featured on NBC Bay Area.
Good morning, my name is Mr. Muse and I teach first grade here at Carver Elementary School, and we have a message for you!
Good morning, Bay Area!
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will, uh, now turn it to our Student Delegates Report, uh, Student Delegates Langston and Student Delegate Lee. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Today, we have a pretty short report, um, but some really important news. Uh, we were able to officially launch our SAC survey out to all of the SVSD high schools. Um, we were really happy to partner with, um, Ms. Goldwasser to help send it out to all the admins of every SVSD high school, and they have all created plans, um, on how they're going to distribute the survey. And now we are getting answers in, and if you've gotten your answer in, fabulous, but there's still three more days, uh, of the window, and every school has a plan to do it themselves, so if you haven't done it yet, then you will in the next couple days if you go to SVSD high school. And we're going to start reviewing those responses after, uh, February 14th, and the school with the highest response rate, we will shout out here at one of our Student Delegate reports. Next, moving on to, um, again, reiterating our need for the SAC to have a full-time advisor. We are transitioning into committees and starting youth summit planning, and that is really hampered without having a full-time staff position to be there to help coordinate a lot of those things we do, to reach out to city organizations, um, and further organizations that then help us, uh, create our youth summit, make it so great, and those are some of the needs that we are not having met without having a SAC advisor.
Yes, and adding on to Langston, we want to be recognized as student leaders who want to create change in our communities, and this is only possible if we have an advisor who could devote all of their time to the Student Advisory Council and understand our needs without any mishaps. But on a more positive note, Rise for Rights, our annual youth summit that occurs every year towards the end of the school year, will be occurring on April 11th, and we are currently preparing presentations for our youth summit. And we plan on having topics presented from education, finance, environmental justice, leadership. And we officially have two organizations. One is NAMI, which is led by our Cabinet Treasurer, and Persistent Planet, which is led by our current Vice President of the SAC. And we plan on also inviting other San Francisco youth nonprofits and organizations to do some tabling as a way to, you know, get students more opportunities outside of the classroom and also more experience. And we are excited for this event and to conjugate many leaders across the district, and we hope to get some more invitations from other high schools.
That concludes our Student Delegate report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Student Delegate, sorry, apologies, I, uh, Commissioner, Student Delegate Lamb, um, for your name mix-up there. Um, moving to item E, public comments. To align with our effective governance model, public comment will last for one hour or, or until 8:00 PM, whichever is earlier. We aim to respect staff, family, and community time by beginning board business no later than 8:00 PM. Our hope is to conduct board business in an effective, efficient, and accessible manner during reasonable hours. Each participant may speak for up to one minute. Staff will thank the participant at the one-minute mark. At one minute and five seconds, I've asked Mr. Steele and Ms. Berias to please turn off the mic and transition to the next speaker. I ask members of the public to please respect that one minute so that we can hear from as many speakers as possible. I encourage speakers who are speaking on the same topic to collaborate and combine their comments so that the Board can hear from all viewpoints during our limited time. Please also note that the Board accepts written public comments via email to boardoffice@sfusd.edu. You will hear first from students in person on agenda items, then general public in person on agenda items, followed by students in person on... followed by students in person on non-agenda items, and then general public in person on non-agenda items. Regardless of whether in-person public comment is complete, we will save 15 minutes for remote public comment, taking commenters in the same order as in person. If any time remains, we will return to in-person public comment. As a reminder, board rules in California law do not allow us to respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment time. If appropriate, the superintendent will ask that staff follow up with speakers. Mr. Steele?
Thank you. So I do have speaker cards for three students. So when I call your name, you can come line up at this podium here, and you'll have one minute each. Zurich Umanzor, Griffin Lawless. Let's go.
Hendrix Seaver.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Zurich Umanzor, and I am a third grader at Sheridan Elementary School. I have gone there since first grade. I want to talk to you about a few things that are important to me. First, I don't think split classes are good because sometimes I have to teach the younger kids, and I can't focus on what I have to learn. It is not my job to do that. Secondly, I want my younger sister, Greece, to be able to go to Sheridan. It would be easier for my mom if she only had to drop us off at one school. I also want her to come here because I know this is a good place for kids to learn. And I want her to get to know my friend, Little Sister, so they, they play together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hendrix. Why are we doing splits? I was in the split class, second and third grade, and I didn't know where I was going though. It's not fair for the second graders because they don't have enough education to keep up with the third graders. It's also not fair to the third graders because they have to slow down for the second graders. It's also not fair for the teacher because they have to take two classes at the same time. If you're doing so many splits, are you trying to close down the school, the school thing? Do I not matter to you? Tell me. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Griffin. Sheridan should not close a kindergarten classroom because the teachers wouldn't have too many students, and we would not be able to learn what we need to. No, I don't want to slow down my reading in math. Please do the right thing.
So those are all those student speaker cards I got. Are there any other students here that didn't indicate there were students on their card? All right. Okay, we can move on. President Kim, so most of these of the cards are going to consider non-agenda items. I mean, they're speaking to not a specific agenda item, but a specific topic. So we do not have any specific agenda item cards, but we can move on to the meat of the public comment, which are non-agenda, if that works.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so I'm going to call the first five people up. Please line up at the podium, and again, you'll have one minute each. And forgive me if I mispronounce names. Rashid Zarif, Alyssa Arno, Holly Combs, Renell Garabaldi, and John Varga. When you're ready, you can go ahead.
Yeah? Good evening. Good evening. My name is Rashid Zarif, parent in McKinley Elementary School. I'm here to speak as one of the over 55,000 families in San Francisco who cherish the hard work that our teachers and staff put in every day. Budget cuts that are being proposed are needed, no question. But do we truly know the impact? As we honor National School Counseling Week and recognize they are critical for our students' well-being, what happens when dedicated social workers like Ms. Carrie Tanabi and McKinley Elementary are potentially eliminated? The plan as it is presented to us does not seem to keep the lights on. It keeps it dim for our children's future. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Alyssa Arno, the TK teacher at Cobb Elementary and a bargaining team member. The district's proposed combination classes not only violate the teacher contract, but directly harm our students and families. Article 9.3.2.1 caps four or five combos at 28 students, yet the proposal steps the cap at 32, forcing us to remove nine upper elementary students. Similarly, the K1 combo would leave 13 of our students without a place at Cobb after the enrollment office assured our current TK families they would have a spot. Research has shown that combination classes often disadvantage younger and struggling students. These demonstrate that students in combo classes typically perform worse academically due to divided teacher attention and reduced grade-specific instruction. Who decides which families must leave, and how does this align with the district's stated equity goals? We should be protecting our students, not forcing them out. Please, keep your hands off our kids. They deserve better. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm an educator at Dr. William L. Cobb Elementary School. I'm speaking against the plan to create combination classes at our school. This plan is a failure that will harm the students. To our new superintendent, you must listen to those working at school sites. Top-down decision-making from someone without education experience does not make sense and does not match your reputation as a thoughtful city leader. The combination class proposal will directly harm our students. Combination classes have consistently failed at Cobb in the past, leading to lower academic achievement, reduced social-emotional growth, and greater inequities for our most vulnerable students. Single-grade classes have transformed learning at Cobb, allowing teachers to specialize in their respective grade levels, focus on the curriculum, the new curriculum, and significantly improve outcomes. The proposed K1 combo would place seven students with IEPs in a class of 22. The four or five combo would place 11 students with IEPs in a class of 37. This goes against the district's stated equity goals.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I press the, uh, just?
Good evening. I'm a teacher at Dr. William L. Cobb Elementary, a legacy school where generations of families have built a thriving community. The district's plan to combine classes will shrink our enrollment, force families to leave, and phase out Cobb despite meeting criteria to remain open. Cobb serves 78% children of color, 72% free lunch eligible families, 10% experiencing homelessness, and 30% in special education. These families deserve stability, not displacement. Closing classrooms at Cobb is a deliberate move toward closure, targeting one of the district's most vulnerable, yet resilient communities. Cobb matters. We must continue to allow it to grow and serve equitably.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Varga, and it's my privilege to be speaking with you this evening on behalf of the dedicated members of IFPTE Local 21, the San Francisco Unified School District employees, and the Professional and Technical Bargaining Unit, truly the backbone of student attendance, teacher support, achievement assessments, and the district's Department of Technology. Our members are essential to SFUSD's success, ensuring classrooms run smoothly and student learning remains uninterrupted. While we're working behind the scenes or on the front lines, our members provide and maintain the technology that students and teachers rely on daily. When students need computers for instruction, homework, or testing, our members ensure they are available and functioning. When connectivity fails, when devices break, or teachers face tech issues or are locked out of district online portals, they step in immediately because every moment lost to a malfunction is a moment lost to learning. Without their expertise, standardized testing now fully online would be impacted.
Thank you.
Our members are not just important to the essential daily functions inside the classroom, they're vital to the district's success. Thank you.
I'm going to call the next group. You can come line up at the podium, please. Marcel Pope, Jocelyn Russell, Brandy, Nancy Severs, and Naomi Pearlman. One minute each.
I am a teacher at Sheridan Elementary School, and I must tell you about what is happening with us. This district has decided to remove a teacher from our site and force us to have a kindergarten first-grade classroom combo. This act will prevent us from providing the education that our students deserve. We are one of the most ethnically diverse sites in San Francisco, and 75% of our families are socio-economically disadvantaged. Our families come to us to find community where we are intimately filled, valued, and respected. Families who are going through traumatic times in their lives come to us, and we all do our best to help their children with love, consistency, care, and education, to help them become productive members of our community.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brandy Lawless. I'm an educator at USF, and that Sheridan kindergartner that you saw reading the speech that he wrote is my son. During class, thank you. During class, he has to read on his own while the other students learn phonics. He reads at a second-grade level. Imagine him in a K1 combo class. A K1 combo class is not student-centered. It's unfair to his teacher, who would have to do differential learning for two grade levels while implementing a new language arts curriculum and a new math curriculum. And it's unfair to that little boy who just wants to learn.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Severs, and I'm the Sheridan kindergarten teacher that would be displaced if the K1 class would happen. My top priority is creating a strong foundation for our youngest learners because we understand that literacy is important, right? In order for me to do my job, I need to be able to sit with them one-on-one, and, you know, I'm never going to read this. Sit with them one-on-one, go over the phonics rules that they need to do, but also every child needs a personalized learning environment for them. And in order to do that, I can't be splitting my mind from K to first grade. Why? Because they learn differently. How do I know that? Because I've taught Kinder and first grade. So yes, I could do it, but you're ripping me away from the community that doesn't have any Spanish-speaking teachers. I'm the only one that speaks Spanish as a teacher at Sheridan. So if you want more Latinos to understand San Francisco and what, why it's important to learn how to read at an early age, is, we, césar, eh, thank you.
Hi, I'm Naomi. I'm a speech pathologist with San Francisco Unified School District for the past 19 years, a parent of two kids who have attended SFUSD from pre-K through high school. I just want you to imagine on the first day, a K1 split. At the end of, one end of the student spectrum, you have a four-year-old who's never been in school, and at the other end, a seven-year-old with potentially three or more years of school experience under their belt. You've got students with a range of school readiness, academic and emotional regulation skills. Four- and five-year-olds will be falling apart by 11:00 AM. Six- and seven-year-olds will be excited to start building on their reading, writing, and math skills. The teacher will be doing their best at implementing two different curriculums as well as supporting the modifications to help the students succeed academically and emotionally, struggling, but doing their best. Support staff who might help are probably nonexistent because of the proposed budget cuts. Where does this leave our kids with special education needs? How is a teacher alone in a K1 split going to be able to provide what all of the students need to access a classroom with this range? This is not fair to our students, teachers, or families. Do not ask Sheridan to implement anything that does not support our students.
I'm going to call the next five speakers. Please come to the podium. Bonnie Makovich, Carol Savery, Philip von Furstenberg, Adriana Blanco, Darcy Chan Blackburn. And you can go whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Makovic, and I've been teaching kindergarten at Sheridan for 10 years. At my first Sheridan meet-and-greet, I talked to a mix of families. Many were excited to be back for another year, but many also warned me that their children were waitlisted at more popular schools in the district. Sure enough, of my 22 students originally, only about 12 stayed beyond the 10-day count. Then my roster filled in with students in the neighborhood who had missed enrollment or recently moved in. Two were newly in foster care, and another was staying temporarily in a nearby shelter. Over the years, my August roster has grown considerably more stable with local families. Next year's new automatic enrollment policy will result in us having at least 20 TK and pre-K students staying at Sheridan. So I fail to see the logic in capping our enrollment at 33. What a shame it would be to have to turn away families in the neighborhood. As an active 10-year veteran at SFUSD, I urge you to consider waiting for all student assignment policies to go into effect before intentionally reducing our numbers. It's in the best interest of the students and families we claim to serve.
Good evening. I'm Carol Savery from Sheridan. I'm here to address what a child's literacy learning experience would look like over their four years in our school if we are required to have a K1 combo class. We currently have a 2.3 split classroom and 2.45 split classrooms. The new literacy curriculum implementation requires split classrooms. Ultimately, the grade-level curriculum is taught each year so students in those classes will not have to repeat curriculum. This has already proven a challenge with our current split classrooms. Where a third-grade student has second-grade curriculum, and then will enter a 4.5 split classroom with fifth-grade curriculum, skipping two years of curriculum as they move to the next grade. If we had a K1 split, this is what a child's literacy experience could look like. Child enters kindergarten, and the first-grade curriculum is being taught that year in a K1 split. They'll remain in the classroom only to have kindergarten instruction the following year. Moving on to the 2.3 classroom, they can have third-grade instruction in second grade, and then second-grade instruction in third grade, and so on through fourth and fifth. Not a good experience for a child's learning.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Philip von Furstenberg. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I've spent the last 11 years at Sheridan Elementary School and 18 years with the district. The district has been systematically steering families away from our school by capping the enrollment of kindergarten in the 2024 school year, which was entirely their decision and lacked any communication with the school, by paying for a bus to take students out of the neighborhood to another part of the city and making the school less attractive with split classes. We know EPC capped our Kinder classes this year because a parent with an older child applied here and was told there wasn't enough space when in fact there was. Since 1910, Sheridan has served multiple generations of family in the community. Our site is located in the heart of the city with the highest percentage of SFUSD students. If you close us down, the other sites in our area will not have enough space to accommodate us. You will be displacing families from the community and forcing them to drive further away. Board members, the threat of closure has occurred at our site three out of five times in the last few years. I welcome you to leave your offices and come talk with our parents, students, and staff to see what we do.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm speaking for a parent, Abby Nichols. My name is Abby Nichols. I am the mother of two current kindergartners at Sheridan Elementary. Their second year at this school, they have had the joy of an opportunity to grow their independence and social circles by being placed in separate kindergarten classes this year. And I would want incoming twin families to be provided the same opportunity, option, and opportunity. Having said that, I am strongly opposed to cutting a kindergarten class and having a mixed Kinder and first-grade class, especially given the caliber of teacher being asked to let go. To let go of a dedicated bilingual educator in a school with a large population of native Spanish speakers is short-sighted, at the least. Not only should the district consider infusing resources into Sheridan rather than diminishing them, but a combination class at that level of development requires a highly skilled educator to hold these two separate educational spaces at the same time. I do not believe that a combination Kinder and first-grade will support the diverse needs of families. Thank you.
My name is Darcy Chan Blackburn. I teach at Sheridan Elementary as well. You've heard our students and our staff and our families. What's going on at our site is a shame. It is horrible. You are trying to shut us down. You are trying to shut us down and we serve the community. We are families that come to us who say for the first time they feel like they're at home, and they're welcome and accepted as they are. And you're doing things to make us undesirable. You are busing students away from the neighborhood, and you are capping our kindergarten classes. We serve the families that come to us unable to enroll on time because of whatever their lives have for them. But we take them, and we bring them, and we give them, and we do that. We can't do that if we make us all split-grade level classes. Now, I have a few more parent letters, which were unable to come, so I will give those to you. And along with the teacher signatures, we have our own signatures to share.
Thank you, Darcy. You can bring that to me. All right, I'm gonna call the next group up. Please come to the podium. Joyce Icasas, Gina Scher, Paige Clark, Steve Zeltzer, Roberto Guzman Rivera. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Joyce Icasas. I've lived here for over thirty years, a taxpayer and voter and community ally with schools and all my friends' kids who go to the public schools or teach in the schools. First, I freeze the grant-funded positions for the community schools fund. These are money as intended by us, the voters, who voted for this proposition a few years ago. This was intended to provide consistent, stable, multi-year funding to improve students' achievement. These funds are to pay people who work with students and families at school sites, and these are consistent for people hired by San Francisco State. When taxpayers do not okay these funds to buy tons of equipment or pay outside contractors with staff who come and go, our children deserve stability. These grants have nothing to do with the school budget deficit. For the benefits grants, there's nothing to close that deficit. Again, as long as the San Francisco voters intend it, I freeze the positions to do otherwise establishment.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paige Clark, a kindergarten teacher at Yucuayl Elementary. I'm here to ask you to protect funding for out-of-classroom, site-based positions such as family liaisons and reading specialists known as ARTFs. These positions are a necessary part of reaching our third-grade literacy goals. To protect funding for these positions, you will need to make cuts away from sites so you can send as much money per pupil as possible. You will need to unfreeze the grant-funded positions. You will also need to continue to allow PTOs to pay for positions. Each sites, even sites able to raise money for positions, often have significant numbers of students who receive free and reduced lunch. Any position the PTO pays for benefits all students who need that support regardless of income. We need to protect all funding sources, site-based, grant, and PTO, so all of our students have the schools they deserve. Thank you.
I'm Gina Scher, ARTF at Yucuayl Elementary. Protect site, grant, and PTO funding for ARTFs. The work I and other ARTFs do is integral to meeting SFUSD's vision, mission, and goals. We are not even close to meeting the goal of seventy percent of third graders reading at grade level. Without ARTFs, we won't meet that goal. Our voting from last year to this, possibly half of the ARTF positions were eliminated. Without these different funds, there will be no ARTFs next year. Many first graders I worked with last year are now reading at grade level. First graders I'm working with now are making huge strides in their reading. Some students need extra targeted small-group instruction to thrive. If we are serious about providing each and every student equitable support required to thrive in the twenty-first century, then we must protect funding for ARTFs.
I'm Steve Zeltzer with the Work Thinking United Front Committee for Labor Party. I think what you voted to do here is a wrecking operation to destroy the public schools in San Francisco. That's what's going on here. This is huge. This is also human investing. And what's going on throughout the state, it's going on Oakland, it's going on in Los Angeles. I think what we have to do is make the billionaires pay for public education. How about laying down and hiring more teachers? Eighty of the billionaires in San Francisco, you're talking about laying down teachers, bringing kids in San Francisco? We need a political alternative. You are brought in by the Democratic mayor, but we are killing our own measures. Twenty-five million, grabbing the money, you're implementing the budget cuts in the last thirty. The billionaires in California, the wealthy people in the world, and we're going after the teachers and students. It's outrageous. It has to stop. We need a general strike. It's not down with the state. I'm bitter. You say a black can't do that. You just play black students. This is going to be very hard in San Francisco. It's going to be a black...
Hi, good afternoon.
My name is Roberto Guzman Rivera, and I have three kids in the school district. Last year, I came to advocate for a speech therapist. My son needed a... and twenty-nine kids. Last December, I came to advocate for a core substitute teacher. I feel like we go forward one step and we go back several. I don't understand why I had to come and talk to you about this. And now, last week, it was announced that we're no longer gonna be hosting the Spring Board, a valuable reading program. English is my second language, and let me tell you what. To learn how to read in English is hard. We need support. Last summer, it was hundred-and-twenty kids that attended the program. Twenty of those kids that were put in waiting lists. We do use that program. We need that program. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the next group of speakers. Please come line up. Melissa Camacho, Joanna Lynn, Jamie Lang, Stephanie Koch, Koch, I think, Christopher Pepper.
Good evening. This is my third time coming to these meetings to fight for our staff. You know how important our staff are, and I'm not even gonna try to convince you. I'm here to completely oppose your staff cuts. You came here as a budget balancer. You seemed like you care. You looked like you cared, but when you come up here and you talk about hard decisions, which means cutting our schools, it makes you look like the other guy who came before you. You're providing a balance of budget on the backs of our hard-working staff at the detriment of our children. I have said this a hundred times, cuts come from the top. If you don't have enough money to fully staff the schools, you need to go across the street and ask for more money. You are not fighting for us. I really want to trust you, but I don't. You're not working for us. This whole thing was ornamental. You let us come here and participate, but you're not including us. You don't even consider anything you say. It doesn't seem that way. We live in one of the most wealthiest cities in the world, and we're over here agreeing this to our kids.
Thank you. That's your time.
Have you even talked to the mayors, fully staff the schools, and give them a living wage?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie, and I want to urge you to consider social workers as essential to the base staffing model. I'm a parent of a first grader, so two years ago, I toured several schools. My kid is high needs, so for my family, social emotional learning was the most important thing. I noticed that the social workers were staffing the wellness rooms, leading the SEL curriculum. I saw students come in and use the supports while on the tours. We ended up at Harvey Milk, and are lucky that SEL is baked into so many aspects of the school, but our social worker, Ms. Summer, still goes above and beyond. She checks in on my kid despite not having a 504. She leads parent groups, and she makes sure vulnerable kids and families are getting the support they need. She helps our kids feel safe. We need this in all our schools more than ever as the federal administration is attacking our immigrant communities, our trans kids, and all of our kids' rights to public education. So please find a way to fund these positions. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I am a parent at Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. I'm here to urge you to staff social workers at every school of every size. School social workers are essential. Our social worker, Ms. Summer, is the reason many of our families are able to overcome attendance barriers and come to school. Ms. Summer is the glue between our educators and families, ensuring students have the personalized plans and supports they need to learn and be their best selves. Ms. Summer enables inclusion and belonging in our diverse school. She facilitates repair and helps our entire community restore peace after conflicts. Our students are safer because of Ms. Summer. Our students are more capable and ready to learn because of Ms. Summer. Our school is more successful because of Ms. Summer. Please, you must retain our social workers. We cannot afford to lose them. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Christopher Pepper. I'm a teacher on special assignment. I work with our health education teachers. I've been a teacher in San Francisco for twenty-three years. I taught at Balboa and at Lincoln High School. I've worked with many of the teachers in this room, especially our health teachers. And our health program is something we can be really proud of. We have had funding to support the growth of this program since nineteen-ninety-one through the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And I'm here to ring an alarm that this program that has really grown into an exemplary program. We have people come from all over the country, sometimes from other countries, to see our program, to see our health programs, and see how good they are. I'm worried about it because our CDC funding, I'm concerned that it will not exist in the future. I need you to work to find replacements for this funding. It's four-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars a year. I don't know if it's gonna continue this year because it's really under the microscope of the federal government right now. Our LGBTQ students in particular really depend on the work that we're doing with that program. Please replace it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Camacho. I'm here for talking about my son and represent many students. My son is in Rosapare. He's learning Japanese. He speaks Spanish, and he speaks English. Because we had the opportunity in San Francisco, but now with the change, we have lost these opportunities. I only have one question for us. What we want for the future for the kids? Education for all. We want education, and this is not one good reason for cut the funds and fire the assistants and the teachers. We need continuing with education and with the opportunity because the kid is the future for the community. The kids is the future for San Francisco. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the next group. Please come to the podium. Katrina Cabilo, Tina Hazelwood, Rory Abernathy, Grace Wakefield, and Sadeen Benjalu... Benjalu, forgive me for mispronouncing.
Hi, my name is Katrina Cabilo. I'm a health education teacher on special assignment. I also help to support our health education teachers primarily secondary. I want to bring to your attention the impending lack or loss of at least some funding from the Center of Disease Control and Prevention. We need the board and the state of California to figure out a plan to support our health education programs as well as the programs that help to support our focal students, like our LGBTQ plus students and the people that support them. We have one person primarily who answers the emails to support our LGBTQ plus students and families. You need to find the funding to keep that person on staff. We need to keep up with the policies and science that help support our students and families in their health education classes.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm a white woman. I use a little English pronouns. I am the district LGBTQ Student Services Co-leader. I am so gratified by all the people I get to work with to do a distributive model to support our queer and trans students and their families and their staff. However, we do not have more than really need. And I'm asking you to please not wait until we know that we're getting the better of friends, but to take the time now to make sure we find those funds to replace the work. Because that is affinity groups. That is curriculum. That is ways that our students see themselves and know that they're okay. They're scared right now. They're scared right now. They have legal existence at the federal level. That is real. I'm asking you to take that seriously. Instead, those students, just two year old students all over SFUSD, asking you to take this seriously. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Grace Wakefield, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Bret Hart. Two weeks ago, staff presented interim goal reports, and several of you asked what was happening in classrooms where interim goals were being met. At Bret Hart, we are exceeding your goals. Eighty percent of our African-American and Pacific Islander K-1 students are reading at or above benchmark levels. Yeah, they're amazing. We're able to do this because of our deep content knowledge, insistence on culturally responsive pedagogy, but ultimately because of our best resource, the people on site. Independently of this district, our K-1 and sped teams are all Orton-Gillingham trained. Several are board-certified. With grant-funded TSAs and our AP, we were able to make an RTI system that's providing earlier intervention. That's what's happening. Relationships, great foundational curriculum, assessment, curriculum of practice, and systems of people with deep content knowledge to teach. It's only possible with people. The curriculum or online program license you buy is going to replace the people we need. Our APs, our coaches, our ARTF, our social worker. It's simple. When you cut, we're not gonna make your goals. I invite you to come to Bret Hart and not just invite anyone, the MBAs there.
Thank you.
Come see what we're doing.
Recently, Trump asked someone in California to open up this flowway of water that went into a hole. You know what somebody could have said? No. They could have just said no. And so we're gonna see more and more things coming to our state, and I'm asking all of you to say no. If you look at our state, right, we have Kentucky, Mississippi, Missouri, and Texas. We are in company with them, not good company. We use ADA to decide how budgets are spent in the state of California. That is an outdated model that we need to get rid of. And in June of twenty-twenty-five, the thirty-two largest unions, teachers' unions in the state of California, will be coming together to change the way that schools are financed in California, to your point, right? In the meantime, hold on and say no, because we are the leaders and the beacon for the entire country right now. If San Francisco does not say no, nobody will.
Hello. As a parent and a prior educator at Dr. William Cobb, I'm really concerned about how will we keep the student and family at the core by combining classes and reduce the number of teachers. SFUSD always advertised about how students will thrive in our schools, and this is our duty. But have you thought about what are the consequences of this cut? Less teachers means larger class size, less individual attention, and lower quality of education. And we're already still struggling with, after the pandemic, we should invest in education. The students are the future, and short-term budget cut leads to long-term consequences for students and society. And I have my student, my daughter, who was experiencing the combo, and she can tell you about how she felt.
Hello, my name is Nora Benahood, and I am in sixth grade in Roosevelt Middle School. As a student that was in a four-five combo, it was hard to slow down when I was in fifth grade. And I was, when I was in fourth grade, I felt behind. Now, when you see the struggle between fourth and fifth graders, imagine the struggle with kindergarteners and first graders. Consider not, consider not for me, but for the schools, but for the school community. I thought you cared, but maybe not. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm gonna call the next group of speakers. Tina Leung, Randy Markman, Sarah Checkman, Agapap Nanfeng. I'm so sorry if I'm mispronouncing. The first name is A-G-G-N-P-O-P. You can just step to the podium and go ahead. You're ready.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tina Leung, and I am a bilingual Chinese speech-language pathologist at Guaden Jilao Elementary School. I am a byproduct of, a product of SFUSD. This is my fourth year in the district, and I provide speech languages, speech-language service to preschool and elementary students. I am in a school community... I am in a school community that is made up of 85% of monolingual Chinese-speaking caregivers who need educators that speak their language to let them know the child's progress and how to support them. Lao has 676 students, and as a big school, we need two administrators to keep our students safe. We need two speech-language pathologists, three literacy specialists. We did not have a social worker in the beginning of the year, and it wasn't until late fall that we had three part-time social workers. Aside from our elementary students, our preschool-aged children also need your attention. There are preschool children that are eligible for walking speech services since spring of 2024. So we need your support to fully staff our schools and stability for our students, invest in their future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Schachman. I'm a parent of a fifth grader Julius at Rosa Parks Elementary School. He's sitting out in the lobby. Hey, buddy. He's, we've had a lot of turnover in our administration at Rosa Parks. We had a principal and an assistant principal who left when my son was in second grade. In third grade, we have a principal who ghosted us in November, and we had a series of substitute principals. You had to bring somebody out of retirement to get through that year. You could feel it everywhere in the school. The teachers were holding the school together because our teachers are amazing. And now we have an incredible principal and an assistant principal who have been working so hard to create a loving community at the school. They've gotten our attendance up. They've gotten our test scores up. And our kids need that continuity and that regularity that they get from having their administrators stay there from year to year. Please do not cut our assistant principal position. We need Ms. Sogo. Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go. My name is Kyle Woodward, speaking on behalf of another Rosa Parks parent who's absolutely now. Rosa Parks is a large, diverse, titleless school, the Western Edition. Staffing cuts on the table are in Brock and ignore the impact of staff on student outcomes. There is no need to achieve state mandates without any thought to our children's success. So Sarah, just a little into Rosa Parks without getting an assistant principal only two hours ago, she coordinates over the IUPs. Since her arrival, chronic absenteeism has fallen 10%. Her scores are up 35%, her math scores are up 50%. It is a gas that will be a waste if this staff is not maintained. But, when we cut, don't have to be pride in such a thoughtless and lettering manner. Finally, in staffing decisions, laws remain at schools. Don't expect to ever consider your stated all-star of student outcomes while evaluating staffing proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brandy, Brandy, before you go, I just noticed that you had also submitted a card for an agenda item, so I can give you a little time, a little more time to speak to both right now.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Steele. Hi, my name is Brandy Markman. I am a public school parent. And I want to talk about this budget mess and why it came about. A couple of weeks ago, I was at a National Stop School Closures Conference put on by the Advancement Project. It was at the NEA Building. And I met students, students, parents, and teachers from around the country. One thing they all had in common, they all use, their districts all use the student outcomes governance model. This model was instituted at SFUSD after a recall. And what did it do? It took away our monthly oversight committees to make sure that our monies would be spent property, properly. Moira Kayla, who is the National Director of Alliance to Reclaim Our Schools, said the ultimate goal of the Students Outcomes Focused Governance Model is to dismantle public education through realignment and transformation, school closures and privatization. And we see this as in continuation of things you're trying to do, like the combo classes. We need these oversight committees back. We need them back stat. We need them back now. I hope that this school board will do what the Los Angeles School Board did, the Clark County School Board. They just voted to discontinue this model because it takes away democracy. It takes away oversight. It means that we as a community have less public comment time. Things were so much different before we had this model. And I encourage people to be vigilant when we talk about billionaires. Five of you setting up with us bias, you were put here by billionaire money. You were backed by anti-teachers union astroturf, and I'm going to name them, the San Francisco Parent Coalition. Together SF, we have Peter Teal's former head management manager sitting in the audience right now. So we know what your agendas are, and to that we all say no cuts, no combo classes, no compromises, and no school closures.
Thank you, Brandy. Okay, I have seven more cards, and then at the end, I will be calling up the UESF designee, who tonight is Adan Luivano. So you can go last, but I'll call the other speakers up first. Kyle Woodward. I think it's Reyna Diaz. Chris Klaus. Reiko Ondo. Violet Vasquez. Cathay Bai, and then Adan, you'll be the designee at the end. So please come up, come up to the podium.
Mr. Steele, is that all of our public comment remaining?
That is.
For imperson, and then we'll move to virtual. Thank you.
So I'm coming at Kyle Woodward, but in the first, I am Dablin Azrahanford. I'm a parent of a third grader at Rosa Parks Elementary and a sixth grader at Willie Brown. I'm concerned about the proposals to cut assistant principals as well as other staff positions. Thus far, you've not provided any sort of insights into how you're going to maintain student achievement and goal setting for these students. You just are cutting. That's all we're hearing. We're not hearing anything else but that. And that just makes me think that you really have no plans. And that's upsetting because you're all sitting there getting a salary that we're paying, but you should be doing. So either get it together or like come up with a different plan because just cutting willy-nilly is not going to do it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Violetta Vasquez. I'm SFUSD alum. My educational journey started at Sheridan Elementary, so I'm very pleased to hear about all the bullying at SFUSD. I've done this such an immaculate school and in a neighborhood I've grown up in my whole life. I went to Aptis and then eventually got pushed out of Balboa and finished at City College. I'm also a San Francisco born and raised native. I'm an organizer and co-founder of Five Elements Youth Program because I'm committed to not tokenizing young people and their leadership here in San Francisco. As well as, I came running when I heard on the news today that you guys were going to be closing and shutting down or cutting our teachers and those who are directly working with our children. I remember all of the difficulties having to navigate SFUSD as a student because of the lack of staffing and because of the pink slips. And now to hear that you're going to do another round. I don't think, I think we should be cutting from the top. You know, you guys, we have the most amount of money coming in is at the top. And so if you guys are so unwilling to part with that amount of money, then at least go and hit up the billionaires like the homie said here.
Hi, my name is Kate B., and I am an SFUSD parent with two kids at Star King Elementary School. I appreciate the difficult decisions that we are faced with, but I am deeply concerned about the lack of transparency around the budget decisions. Dr. Sue, you have said repeatedly that student outcomes are at the center and the core of your decision-making. And yet so many parents and teachers have come here today to say that we don't see that analysis. Where is that work? I think I'm not alone. I'm probably not the only parent in this room who has been feverishly poring over past budget numbers in a giant spreadsheet, looking for the answers, and the numbers do not add up. And every time we consider a budget strategy, I would ask that we weigh the estimated number of students impacted against the estimated financial savings. If, for example, we eliminate school counselors, we eliminate social workers, world language programs, each of those line items should show the number of students who are going to be impacted as a result of those decisions.
Thank you.
And since this was actually a budget item, can I have 30 more seconds?
I think, no.
This was an agenda item, so just 30.
Okay, 30 seconds.
Okay, I would just ask that you share transparently what costs and reductions are being conducted within the central office, which you promised to share with us, and yet in today's slides, I don't see anything about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Reyna Diaz. Yo vengo de Sanchez. Actualmente estoy en el comité de ILA. Y estoy aquí porque estoy preocupada también por la educación en que están teniendo los niños. Que ellos no conocen límites, no conocen respeto, hacen mucho bullying. También quiero hablar también sobre la vestimenta de los niños. Es otra cosa que a mí me, me, me inquieta mucho. Las niñas van vestidas muy mal. También estoy de acuerdo que no deben despedir maestros. Nosotros necesitamos maestros. Nosotros estuvimos tres años sin maestro de kinder, y mi niña no aprendió nada. Le dieron clases dos maestros que se turnaban, y mi niña no aprendió nada. Entonces necesitamos maestros, necesitamos terapistas de habla. Necesitamos también más maestros de, terapistas de, de... Gracias.
Thank you. Hold for a moment for translation, please.
Good evening. My name is Reyna Diaz, and I'm coming from Sanchez. I'm actually, I, right now, I'm at ILA. I'm here because I am concerned because of the education that the kids are receiving. They are not knowing about boundaries. They are not knowing about respect, and there's a lot of bullying happening. I also want to talk about the clothing that the kids, this is a thing that concerns me a lot. The girls especially are dressed very, very, very bad. And I also agree that there should not be firing teachers. We need the teachers. We were here three years without a kindergarten teacher, and my girl didn't learn anything. They, she was given classes by two teachers that were taking turns. She didn't learn a thing. So we need more teachers. We need speech therapists, and we also need all other kinds of therapists. Thank you.
I'm Chris Klaus, a sped teacher in department-headed Washington High School. An effective school community requires that the school be fully staffed. Unfortunately, we are frequently understaffed and struggling to meet our students' needs. That's because being fully staffed means more than just every class having a teacher, which we've struggled with this year. It means having subs, family liaisons, a fully-staffed wellness center, security team, academic counseling department, special education department, including related service providers, school psychologists, parent educators, teachers, and case managers. And that doesn't even cover all of the support staff and site administration that is needed. Something else to consider is that many students draw motivation from the electives that they are able to make. So offering a variety of different elective options is crucial. When schools are not fully staffed, learning is halted, services and supports go under delivery, no one is able to focus on learning that needs to happen, and students and communities suffer. Our schools need more funding and people, not ones.
Thank you, Chris.
Hi, my name is Reiko Ondo, and I'm a Rosa Parks parent and former SFUSD teacher, and I currently work for an after-school program provider in the district. As other Rosa Parks parents have already noted, our assistant principal, Ms. Sogo, has supported over 100 IUPs at our school site, and our school's literacy and math scores and our attendance rates have seen significant strides since she was onboarded after we've had a few years of administrative turmoil. And stripping away this critical person from our school site will cause irreparable harm, especially to our African American and immigrant families who make up our school site. School, students, district pride will face similar harm when support staff are eliminated. Please fight harder for all of our school communities. Don't take money and resources away at the school level, and please don't set up our schools to fail.
Thank you. Mr. Adan? Yes, so this will be the designated USF speaker for the evening, using their time.
Great, thank you. Just quickly before you go, I know that we started also about just over 10 minutes behind. So after you, I asked UESF's time not be included as part of our time for public comment. So once UESF is done, we'll move to online public comment for 10 minutes, and then we'll move on. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adan Luivano, and I'm a school psychologist in my 19th year with the district. It's my honor to be here tonight as the lead negotiator for United Educators of San Francisco that represents classified and certificated workers. We submitted, tonight we were hoping to submit our letter sunshine so we could begin talking about negotiations. And we submitted that over a week ago, but unfortunately, we did not make the agenda, but that's okay. We can do this again next meeting. So we're happy to do that. I can't wait anymore. Our schools, our students deserve fully-staffed and fully-funded schools. Our students deserve educators and school sites that can both recruit and retain educators with improved pay. Our students also deserve stable community schools where we are able to support them and their families. And lastly, our students and our educators deserve dignified learning and working conditions. Over 3,500 members participated in the survey to let us know the political issues that we need to negotiate this contract. Over 3,000 members and 60% of the school sites have signed the petitions that you see here tonight. This is before bargaining has even started. We hope to meet with your representatives of the bargaining team, and we hope that they come prepared and we're going to find real solutions to the problems that we face now. It is our pleasure to be representing all of our members, our students, and we've heard from so many people tonight of the real issues that are happening in our district. We will see you again in two weeks, and we look forward to working with you all to find the real solutions that we need that are happening every day here in our district. Thank you very much.
President Kim, that concludes interesting public comment.
Good evening. We have about 10, we have 10 minutes set aside for public comment. I'd like to kindly remind everyone that each speaker will have one minute to share their comment at 1 minute and 5 seconds. The speaker will automatically be muted, so please do your best to keep your comment to one minute to allow everyone to speak. First, we'll hear from students, then we will hear from those speaking on agenda items, and finally, we will hear from those addressing non-agenda items. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches. Se les recuerda a los participantes que quieran hacer comentarios, que solamente tienen derecho a un minuto. Con el minuto, con cinco segundos, se les va a cortar el micrófono. Así que, por favor, traten de estar dentro de estos minutos. Primero se les dará la pauta para los estudiantes, después se va a hablar acerca de los puntos en cuanto a la agenda, y después se podrá hacer comentarios acerca de los puntos que no están incluidos en la agenda. Muchas gracias, Candice.
Odejamos, se le dará 10 minutos de发言, cada persona tiene 1 minuto de tiempo. Por favor, respete el tiempo de todos. Tu micrófono estará en 1 minuto y 5 segundos, se detendrá, se encierra. Primero les voy a decir a los estudiantes, luego les voy a decir lo que está ocurriendo en el evento.
Thank you. At this time, if you are a student, please raise your hand. This is time for students only. Rebecca?
Hi, I have two children who would like to read. Go.
Hi, my name is Ethan, and I graduated from Sheridan Elementary School in 2023. I still go to events and the school to support my younger brother, and one of the things I like the most about Sheridan is how it's such a loving and supportive environment where every child has the chance to be seen and heard, taught and cared for. I am glad that I was given the opportunity to be in a strictly kindergarten classroom because I can still remember what it was like to be that young and just starting to learn new things. By first grade, I was able to sit longer or pay attention for longer periods of time as well. To put simply, there is a big difference between in the two grades, and I would hate for future students to not get the same educational experience I had. Thank you.
I have one more child who would like to read.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Ari, and I am a fifth grade student at Sheridan. One of the things I like most about my school is how I have been given the opportunity to learn in a setting that supports my educational needs. Like my brother, I remember the difference between kindergarten and the first grade. I think it would be really challenging to learn as a kindergartner next to first graders. I think, oh, I think it would be...
Superintendent and good evening Commissioners, Lisina E. Berry, I am the Director of the Bond Program here at SFUSD. I have with me today Dave Olson from Baxter McCarley Berry &amp; Company. Long name. He advises the District on public finance-related matters and is available as a resource if there are questions. If we could just move to the next one, since the Superintendent provided an excellent introduction, just a reminder to this Board and also to the public that San Francisco Voters in November 2024 approved a bond measure for SFUSD, authorizing $790 million in new funds for, to continue the District's bond program. The bond program, of course, funds capital investments, construction projects across the District. In preparation for this bond, the bond program has continued to pursue a design of active projects in anticipation of new funds being available in 2024. And so now that the voters have approved the authorization, we are ready to pursue Series A or our first issuance of this bond sale. We need new funds really, really in May. You'll see in the schedule later that this would close in April to fund the next 18 months of SFUSD's bond program. It has been the practice of the District when we go out to the financial markets for new money to also look at refunding or refinancing existing debt that the District is holding. This is codified in the District's debt policy and is generally a good financial practice to ensure savings to taxpayers over time. So tonight, this presentation is really for both of the bond-related discussion items on tonight's agenda. Authorizing, the first one, authorizing $160 million in bonds as new money to the District, and the second discussion item, authorizing the District to refund old debt to potentially capture savings for taxpayers. This slide is our tentative schedule for these two financing actions. We are here tonight with the first reading. The purpose of the first reading is to provide the public and the Board with an opportunity to review what will come before the Board in March as an action item, which will be approval of two resolutions and a series of supporting financial documents that essentially the District uses as disclosures to potential investors of our bonds. And so you can see on this schedule that we'll be back in March. We also need to go to the Board of Supervisors, which we will do sort of contemporaneously, and then we will speak with the financial market rating agencies and then go to the market at the end of March for closing in mid-April. Really, the remainder of the presentation is really public information about the bond program. We did have an opportunity to brief each of the Board members previously, so I don't think there's a need to do that, go through the rest tonight, but we wanted to make sure that the public was able to see which projects the bond program is working on. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up for questions from the Board. Commissioner Fisher?
Not so much a question as much as a comment. I really appreciate the context that's shared here, the opportunity to participate in discussions before tonight. And one of the things that really stood out from, for me, I really appreciate the intentionality in all the work that's being done by our Bond Office. You know, the transparency is super helpful to me. And recognizing the fact that in a lot of places, bond funding is treated as boom and bust, and the fact that instead of doing that, we are trying to put together a more robust plan and we're being very careful. You know, the fact that this is only an 18-month bond sale and that we're planning to do everything we need to do to responsibly go out to investors and make the right compliance decisions. I really just want to thank you all for your efforts here. And I know we have our CBOC and our, a lot of other opportunities hopefully for community engagement, because this is a lot of public money. So, so thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Vice President Houli.
Thank you so much. I wanted to just ask one clarifying question for the benefit of the public. My, I asked a question in the advanced document about the schedule for additional funds, and by that I was referring to the fact that we approved as voters a $790 million bond. This only, this resolution only raises 160 million of that. Could you explain what the schedule is for issuing bonds for the remaining $630 million? And whether that means that the projects funded will go beyond those identified in this document?
Sure, thank you. Yes, I'm going to answer those in reverse order. It absolutely means that there will be additional projects beyond those that are listed in this one. Again, these are only projects that are ongoing now and that we initiated with 2016 funds that need 24 funds for construction. That's a generality, but it's mostly true for the list of projects that are on this list. It is also correct that these fund the next 18 months of the bond program. As we have not initiated yet any projects as new starts under the 2024 program, we're not borrowing any money for construction of any of that because design itself takes, you know, 18 months is sort of a good rule. We are really modeling this, understanding that our next big tranche of funds will be needed towards the end of 2026. And that brings us to the close of our 18-month timeline and likely the timing of Series B, which would be our next new money sale. We, as we model this program, are looking for likely three or four series, which really should match up with our expenditure schedule per our requirements. Just from the IRS, from the tax code, if we are issuing taxes and bonds, we are required to expend them, 85% of those funds within three years of receiving the funds. And so that's why it's really important that we not, you know, go out and sell more bonds than we can spend, because we don't want to be out of compliance with the IRS.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Ray?
Hi, thank you so much for the presentation tonight. Sorry, can you hear me? Okay. I have a general question, and I apologize for not asking this before, but I didn't, I just didn't notice it. So if you need to give me the answer later, that's fine. But I noticed that the BVHM project, which I understand is a modernization, is at a total budget of 105 million. And if I'm remembering correctly, I think the Mission Bay project was around 100 million for a totally new school. So I'm just wondering, why, why is the modernization, if I'm remembering correctly, costing so much more?
So the Bonavista Horace Mann project is, I would say, atypical in scope for the history of the bond program. And it was really scoped three years ago, and the direction that was given to the bond program at that time was to pursue a comprehensive modernization. Instead of what we had typically done before was to essentially establish an allocation and design to that allocation. So Bonavista Horace Mann, $105 million, really reflects a campus-wide upgrade to every building. On some other sites, there had been, you know, some buildings left out of the scope to preserve budget. I think in the briefings, the way I tried to explain this was there's sort of two different ways to think about this. One is to say we have $20 million for, you know, 10 sites and allocate the money just across those sites evenly. The other way, another way, is to look at the facility's unique needs and model the scope of work after that. I would say that that was the case with Bonavista Horace Mann. And so really, the District's leadership at that time made a decision to pursue this very large scope of work at an individual site.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the Board? Thank you. I think this also includes Item 2, the first reading, but I'll read it into the record. Am I supposed to do that? Counsel? Okay. This presentation covered both items, correct? Thank you so much. Any questions about the second one in particular? Okay. Thank you so much to staff, and we'll move on to Item 3, our Fiscal and Operational Health Update. And with that, I'll call on Dr. Sue to present this item.
Thank you, President Kim. Thank you, President Kim and Commissioners, and of course, members of the public. Today, I'm going to share with you a snapshot of where we are and our best thinking and the best work that we have so far done towards our budget. I am really happy to be, to be joined here in this presentation with Meli Laus Smith, our Executive Director of Strategic Initiatives. So I just want to reiterate and, I guess, comment on the fear and the concern that I'm hearing from public comment. I, I hear you. I hear that it is a really tough place to be in right now, where we have to make these tough decisions, and these tough decisions are going to, as I shared in our last meeting, impact people that we know and impact our students and impact our schools. I am very committed to continuing to make sure that SFUSD remains not only a beacon of hope for our students, but a place where students can come to receive the support that they need, the, the mental and well-being that they deserve, and of course, the academic supports that they require. However, we are, at this moment in time, facing a very large deficit. $113.8 million represents 10% of our budget, and it requires us to make really difficult decisions. But that doesn't mean that we make these decisions irresponsibly. It means that we need to be very careful with the power that we have in our hands. It means that we need to be very strategic with the resources that we have. We have to be laser-focused in how we make these cuts, particularly because we will always have children and students at the center of every decision that we make. We are committed to making sure that we provide the detailed budgets that is required to have that level of transparency that not only do you all, this body here, need, but our parents and our educators and our staff needs as well. In fact, we have already started to engage with site leaders and principals on this budget planning process. And I will admit, more is necessary, more information is needed, but this is where we are now. I recognize that these difficult decisions are not easy to swallow, but I also know that we are all capable of making these decisions on the behalf of our children. Next slide, please. So the purpose of today's meeting is to provide Commissioners with a snapshot of where we are and the initial thinking of our strategic staffing model. We are not going to provide the details behind the specific budget and the multi-year projections. I think one of our public commenters asked about that, you know, where were we before? Where are we going now and where will we be in the future? That level of information will come to the Board on March 11th, when we present our second interim. So that is also a moment where we should all just recognize that the budget process is a very long process. It generally starts in December, January, and it just continues until November, until November, oh my God, until June, when, when the budget will be fully adopted. Next slide, please. So as many of you are aware, the District, like many districts in California and nationwide, have been experiencing a declining enrollment trend. For us, we have been experiencing this for many, many years now. And because our revenue is very much linked to enrollment, we now have less resources because unfortunately, our enrollment has decreased over the years. However, what hasn't decreased are our expenditures. Our expenditures continue to climb, and because of that, we are in a place where we are now out of balance. And so that means we are now deficit spending. For many years, SFUSD has relied on one-time funds represented by the yellow bars here to help us carry ourselves from year to year. Think of it as a line of credit. So every year, we tip in, we dip into this line of credit. Unfortunately, we might end up without any more monies in our line of credit in a few short years. I will say, this practice is not unique to just San Francisco. A lot of other districts do this. They use one-time dollars, particularly the dollars that you can see here that came in a lot of during COVID times. We use those one-time dollars to really provide a lot of supports for our students. Unfortunately, those one-time dollars are going away. As we spend, as we spend down the one-time funds from our fund balance for ongoing expenses, it means that we need to reduce our expenses. Otherwise, we will run out of our, we will run out of cash by mid-2026. I think last time we were here, I shared with you our monthly payroll. Monthly payroll is six, wait, oh, how much is monthly payroll?
I'm not exactly sure, but I think it was between 65,000 and 85,000, but don't quote me on it.
Our monthly payroll is around 60,000 a month. If we do not address this gap here, we will not be able to meet our payroll. No, it's 60 million. 60 million. Supposedly, that's a common movement. 60 million, 60,000 would be easy. Well, we cannot allow ourselves to be in that position. Next slide, please. So therefore, we have to make these cuts. So if we make the cuts, we make these painful cuts, the cut for next year of 113.8 million dollars. It will help us stop the increase in expenditures and allow us to start down the path to rebalance ourselves. These cuts will be painful for the short term, but they're necessary for the long term. I think I've shared with you my vision before of if we make these cuts now, we will be in a much better place in two years' time, where this district will be fully solvent, meaning we control our budget, we control how we allocate our dollars, we control what types of programs and initiatives we want to fund. And more importantly, we will have and be able to give our teachers and educators and staff a level of stability and predictability that they need, which then translates to a level of stability and predictability that our students need. But we have to do this really hard thing now. So consistent to the resolution that we passed in, for about, for me to deliver a balanced budget, this is why I am proposing these really drastic cuts. Next slide, please. So in, oh, I'm sorry. Right. So in June of 2024, the Board of Education passed a resolution committing to implementing a fiscal stabilization plan that included elimination of positions, one-time funds, and reducing positions through our general fund, our unrestricted general fund. So consistent with that resolution of passing a balanced budget, this is going to be my top priority that we have been working on since I started here at the District four months ago. I've been working very closely with our CDE advisors so that we can identify all the areas that need to be reduced, identify areas where we could have greater efficiencies in operations, and provide different options for our staff so that we can help to work towards a more balanced budget. One of those options is our supplemental early retirement plan, which is our incentive program for members of our community who chooses to take an early retirement. And then, of course, for us to continue to review all of our contracts, and then, of course, finally, our layoffs. We continue to monitor the Governor's budget because when the May revise comes out, we would hope that the revise will look similar to what was released in January. But we're not sure. If it doesn't look like what it looked like in January, then we're going to have to come back and figure out another strategy. At this moment in time, we're monitoring it and we're hoping that it will stay stable. Next slide, please. So once again, this is another representation of what I just shared. Our goal is to make the very painful $113.8 million in reductions in our budget, which I want to remind again, that's, that's a 10% reduction of our total budget. And the strategies that we're using to get there is to, to use our early retirement package, our early retirement incentives. And I will say right now, we are feeling very hopeful of what we are seeing in terms of interest in that package option. We're also making very drastic central office reduction. I know that there was a question about making sure that we cut from the top, and we are. We're also looking at contracts and other non-FTE, non-staffing reductions. And then, of course, our last resort is to look at staffing reductions. At this moment in time, I am going to hand this over to Meli to share with you how are we getting to our budget allocations and our staffing model?
Thank you, Dr. Sue. Can I have the next slide, please? And good evening Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to present. As, can you just go to the other one? Yeah, that one, thank you. As you know, this school year, the District implemented a school staffing model, and the staffing model was designed to provide schools with an allocation methodology for determining the resources available to the school to operate their school site. As our revenues have continued to decline and the one-time restricted resources are no longer available, we have needed to update the staffing model to support the budget stabilization plan. And that's what I want to share with you, the high-level view of that today. Next slide, please. As Dr. Sue mentioned, budget planning, when resources are limited, is complex. We all know that it's very difficult to make hard choices of where to cut expenses. So the first thing we needed to do was update the staffing model, and in doing so, we wanted to start with the very basic question, what do we have to do to keep the lights on to welcome over 50,000 students to our schools every day? And to do this, we need a qualified teacher in every classroom, we need a principal at our schools, we need clerks in our offices, we need custodians to clean the buildings, we need student nutrition workers to prepare and serve the meals. What we also wanted to look at was not just the school site, what is needed to keep the lights on on that side, but also at our central office, looking at the bases, what is the base for our central office? What are the expenses that we need to pay to keep the lights on? And those include substitutes and leaves, our transportation for both our special education and general education students, facilities, utilities, routine, restricted and maintenance, that's the set aside for repairs and maintenance to our buildings, our special education contribution, and our central office operations. So when we looked at both of those things in terms of keeping the light on, we really wanted to say, what is our base cost that should come from our unrestricted ongoing funding? Go to the next slide, please. Thanks. Next slide, sorry. Thank you. So what we did was to determine the base cost for the school sites. We looked at, we determined the number of principals, clerks, and teachers based on our enrollment. So it was very, these are enrollment-driven numbers for our base allocation. And we wanted to look at our enrollment to know how many teachers we needed in each of our classrooms. We also were guided by our collective bargaining agreements to determine the number of students in a classroom. We then needed to factor in the programs and services provided by our central office, but in doing that, we accounted for a 20% overall reduction in central office, which is equivalent to 20 million dollars. So you will see the 80 million for central services in the chart, and that represents a 20 million dollar rejection. In doing that, the calculation ended up being a cost of 791 million dollars, and our current projections for unrestricted general fund is 679 million dollars. So the next step we did was we wanted to look at what are our ongoing restricted monies that are most fungible? They're like the least restricted of restricted monies. We can use them for other, we don't, we have multiple purposes, we can use them. And when we looked at those fundings, and we wanted them to be ongoing, because some of our restricted monies, like our PIF SLAM monies, our PIF Other General Uses, our QTA funding, that is ongoing, so we wanted to add that into our base. When we did that, we were able to get that 700, get the cost going to our base UGF funding down to 727 million, which leaves a deficit of 57 million. And this 57 million, which I think many people have noticed, is it does not account for the cost for the additional services and priority investments in our schools that are really critical for our student outcomes. But I want to be clear that this does not mean that we will not receive those additional services and priority investments in schools. It means we have more work to do to understand the restricted resources we have available for those investments before we can share our budgets with school sites. Go to the next slide, please. So our next immediate step is to turn our attention to our restricted resources and leverage those resources to support our base, where we can also support the additional services and priority investments. This is where we are today, and we are making progress. I also wanted to give you a more holistic picture of the strategic staffing model. I think initially, when it was shared previously, it made it seem as though the base was all we were considering as what was needed at a school site. So really, what you can see in the pyramid is the blue is the base staffing, and that's what I just described. And also remember, that includes the central office side of it. We have green, which is our sports, library, arts, and music, that's our PIF funding, that is ongoing funding, and that continues, and we're really fortunate that that continues to support programs at our school sites. We have grant-funded specific resources at schools, which are Student Success Fund, Community Schools Partnership Grants, could be PTA funding and other grants, and then site discretionary funds. Those are the funds that we are pretty confident of the amounts, and that information we hope to be sharing with schools soon. The other two that we're looking at is what we call the Additional Student Services, which you can see also include what, what used to be part of the base. I think that's a big shift for us, the District. Because we're an equity-focused District, our base has always been very robust. And we have been very fortunate to have a lot of one-time funding and restricted resources to build that base. We are now having to look at the base as sort of staffing enrollment-driven and all of the additional services as finding restricted resources for it. That includes assistant principals at the middle school and high school level, noon monitors and such. The other thing we really wanted to elevate was what are, what are the priority investments for our student outcomes, for our vision, values, goals, and guardrails, for those goals? What are those positions that whatever restricted resources we have available, we would prioritize to move our student outcomes for it? So that's instructional coaches, counselors, A through G course offerings. So, that's instructional coaches, counselors, A through G course offerings. You can see that list. So, this is the staffing model that we are working towards. We have been able to meet with our site administrators and begin the conversation about the model and to get their thoughts. While we are currently in a hiring freeze, as you know, based on our negative certification, we want to provide site administrators with information about their base allocations and additionally, guidance on how and when they can use the site-specific funds, the grants, the Student Success Funds, the Community School Partnership Funds, like what does that look like? So that when the hiring freeze is lifted, school sites will know already have guidance on how to hire positions to more supplement the base funding or the other parts of our staffing model. And we're looking forward to that coming time. Sorry. So, what I want to do, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Su, but I did want to give you all just sort of a snapshot. We'll be sharing this. We've been getting feedback from our site administrators. It has, is, as Dr. Su said, we have many more conversations. We need to really dive into it. But this is, wanted to share with you where we are today, where we hoped, where we actually are very confident we can get to, and continue to share updates, particularly with the second interim coming up. And I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Su.
Thank you, Meli. And I have the rest, a couple more slides, but I just, before I start, I just want to reiterate that equity is still at the forefront of all of our decisions here. We are building this budget with that in mind, but we have to continue to be vigilant and monitor what is happening. And the governor's may revise that's coming out. We will be looking at what the SERP will yield for us, and hopefully, that will bring in additional resources as well as continuing to have conversations with our site leaders and principals so that we can understand what are the, what are the programs and services and staffing needs that they need. And, of course, continuing to work with our CDE advisors. Oh, I've moved on to the next slide. I'm sorry. So, so as I shared before, so yes, equity is forefront. We're monitoring the SERP. We're going to monitor the governor's may revise. We are going to continue to come back to this body to provide more budget updates. The most notable one is that on March 11th, we will be sharing with the board the second interim budget. And that is where we do a deeper analysis of where we are and how much have we spent already of where we are and the projections for us in years, in the out-years, in fiscal year '25, '26, and '26, '27. Once again, the goal is for us to be a solvent district, and quite frankly, we need to have a healthy reserve so that we can prove to CDE that we are able to and can stand on our own two feet and manage our own dollars and, more importantly, our own district. So, this is our budget timeline. I am very, very committed. I am very confident as well that we will be able to have a balanced budget by June for full adoption of this board. I want to, once again, reiterate and remind folks that 80% of our budget is comprised by staff, our workforce. And unfortunately, as we make these really painful reductions, it does mean that the reductions is felt by our workforce. But I believe that we will be able to get through this. We will be able to come back and become a very strong district that is leading in world-class programming for our students so that we can reach and achieve all those goals that we have laid out for our students. I am very fortunate to be working with really dedicated staff throughout the district. And I look forward to working with our labor partners to make sure that we will be able to achieve the outcomes and the goals that we laid out here. So, yes, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Su, and thank you, Ms. Klaus Smith. Also, just to acknowledge that today, there was a memo added this afternoon by Dr. Su that further explains just some of the context that was shared today, which I do think is critical to helping to understand exactly the context behind this presentation. And so, with that said, I'd like, I know there's a lot of questions that could be asked around our budget, so I would love to just begin by asking for clarifying questions on the presentation and the content in front of us before we go into deeper strategic conversations that we can reflect on together. So, if there are questions to clarify the content that has been put in front of us, I would ask that Commissioners, Board delegates, please raise your hand. Commissioner Ray.
Thank you both for the presentation. I appreciate it. In terms of clarifying questions, I am wondering if you will be able to provide at the, you know, at the next meeting or otherwise add to the slide deck that's provided here for the public, a more detailed version of the slides? Because when I looked at, sorry, it's the one with the, with the chart here, this one here. I personally had the experience of not being able to make these, these numbers make sense to me. So, it would be really, really helpful to, you know, to show where each of the numbers mentioned on this slide comes from, and even perhaps to have something like, looking at the chart, I see principal, and then reading across, I see a certain amount of money. And I don't entirely understand what that means. Does that mean that's enough money to cover all the principals and how many are there? Or does that mean that's just how much money we have for principals that's listed in that column? In many respects, I couldn't follow this chart. And I think it's really important to provide that information for the public and for us and for the sites because we all need it in order to be able to make decisions and have confidence in what the district is doing. Thank you.
Do you want us to answer a question by question?
For the clarifying questions, yes, and then we'll go around.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ray, for the question. And you're right, what is missing from the deck is what we would call the allocation methodology. How did we come up with the number? So, for example, for principals, that's looking at one principal per school, and the 220, I'm really getting my zeros off. The 22.1 million reflects the salaries and benefits for the 101 principals, one principal per school. So, that is where it is. But yes, we can get the allocation methodology details provided to how the numbers were generated. But that's what it means. It's like the number of clerks at each school, one clerk per school, and how that methodology. And so, all of this represents, except for the nurse, the 504, all of the, I'm sorry, the positions represent the salaries for those positions across the whole district.
Thank you. We'll just go down this way, if that's all right. Commissioner Alexander?
Yeah, I had a similar kind of clarifying question. So, I would second Commissioner Ray's question around where, how did the numbers, where did the numbers come from? But also, I was having trouble even understanding how they add up. So, it says, "Our projected base expenses are $791 million. After preliminary accounting," this is the same slide, "after preliminary accounting for PIF OGU, PIF Baseline, QTA, and a portion of LCFF supplemental, it is $727.2 million. This results in a projected deficit of $57.9 million." Is that, that's, what's the deficit? That's between 791? I don't understand where the, I don't understand the difference between those, the two numbers, 791, 727. And then the deficit number just seems to like come out of thin air. So, I don't, and I, yeah.
I can walk through that.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. So, if you look at, so the, the column, the unrestricted general fund column is rolled up. It's, it's the 600, so the costs are the costs for the number of principals, the number of clerks, the number of teachers, right? Does that make sense to the cost? Okay, so that adds up to 700. Yeah, I see what you're, I know exactly what you're saying, so I'm going to.
I don't even know where the 791 came from, because I see, I see how it adds up to 727. Where was, where's the 791?
So, this is how it goes. That number is 727 in that column. You see the next column that says additional eligible funding? Oh, I'm sorry, additional eligible funding, the one on the full right. That represents the cost that is going for classroom teachers. We will pay $236 million out of the unrestricted, plus $35.3 million out of additional eligible funding. So, those two combined. So, when you do 727 plus 75.
That's 802. It's not 791.
Then you are right that the table is, I will have to get that better for you.
I mean, that's why I was confused. I was, those are supposed to add up to 791.
Yeah, and I apologize. In, I had a spreadsheet that I was looking at when I was pulling those numbers, so I apologize that.
So, which, do we know which ones are correct?
They're all correct, except for you're not seeing the 791, so.
Wait, is.
Can I?
But is it, does the total 802 or is the total 791?
Okay. What, let me think how I'm going to say this so it makes sense, and I apologize that I'm not being clear. Because I, can I just look at one document in my head to see? I'm sorry.
Can I just jump in really quickly? So, we're going to, we're going to have to get better at sharing budget information. But I think the story here, or the line here, is that it costs us $791 million to fully fund the base. And the base includes all of these things here. We exhausted what we have in unrestricted general fund. So, we exhausted the $669.3 million of unrestricted general fund. And once we, once we exhausted all that, we started to go into our restricted sources to try to see if there were parts or categories within restricted that we could draw to pay for the base because we wanted to make sure, at a minimum, we could fully fund the base.
Yeah, no, I understood the concept. I was just literally just trying to understand, is it 791? Like, I couldn't figure out where the 791 comes from, because 727 plus 75 is about 802.
I apologize. I think that there was rounding errors. And so, as you're rounding these numbers, and we shrink it down to just one integer, we're losing some of.
I think it's a transposition, and I apologize. I was, I don't want to make excuses. I had the numbers correct in my spreadsheet, and I think when we transitioned them over, I can take time to do that and correct it. We can put it on the slide deck. We can get it to the board commissioners. But to explain, I think overall, what you're saying is correct, Commissioner Alexander. When we look at the, the 866 million really is the amount. But again, I think it would be better if I could share the more detailed spreadsheet to say how it is all broken down, so I could explain these. And I apologize.
Thank you. Vice President Huling?
Thanks. Yeah, I am curious where that additional $11.7 million is represented. And I understand it's really difficult to be presenting your work publicly as it's very much in progress. And I just want to ask a clarifying question to that end about Slide 10, which is the pyramid. Because when I saw that, I'm going to say it freaked me out. It looks like it's saying that we are only funding the blue and green layers of the pyramid and that schools will not have the pink and yellow part of the pyramid. But what I now understand, and I want you to confirm, because it's very important that this is, that I'm correct in understanding this, is that we just are only through, working through what unrestricted funds and subset of our restricted funds we have available to fund the blue and green layers, and that now the work in building our budget continues to identify and allocate our remaining unrestricted, or sorry, our remaining restricted funds to ensure that those top two layers of the pyramid are in fact funded for next year. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Before we move on with clarifying questions, I'm going to invite the Board delegates, student delegates, sorry, to share their questions, and then we can continue on. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for doing that since we are dismissed at nine, so thank you for jumping to us. But unfortunately, I think it's something that might be shared, a shared sentiment here tonight, is I feel almost more confused now than I did coming in. And it's with the process, but also on the idea of equity. Dr. Su, you talked about equity was at the center. And I, I'm just like failing to sort of see that through all of this, especially when it comes to our alternative schools. And as a high school student, obviously, typically, I'm going to think of the high schools first. But we have alternative schools all around the district. And I want to know how they are being looked at with this model in mind? Because with the base model of what every school looks like for the, when we saw the pyramid, for a lot of our alternative schools, they do a lot of equitable, equitable work for our most marginalized students. If that's not going to work for them. So, I want to know how those sites were included when looking at this model. And then also, as another question of mine was with counselors, and high school counselors. And for me, seeing that one in sort of like the third bracket of requirement for a high, for schools, of high schools, middle schools in general, really concerning for me, going to a larger high school with a ton of counselors that works with a bunch of students. And even though we're, we have a lot of counselors, they still work with hundreds of students. And not having that guaranteed for some of these high schools, it sounds pretty much insane to me to think of some high schools with really limited counselor positions with hundreds of students they have to meet with, have appointments with. I'm lucky enough to go to a school where I can walk in and have a meeting with a counselor. But if I don't have that ability, or students don't have that ability to have, to make those appointments and have to wait weeks for those appointments to come in, it sounds like we're not supporting our students in the way that we should be, and doesn't sound very equitable to me. So, I just had a question, questions basically around how equity was used in this process and how we made sure that was, and what our alternative schools are looking like with this process.
And adding on to Langston, when it comes to counselors, yeah. Since custodians are considered base staffing to keep schools clean, which was also mentioned during this presentation, why are school counselors who constantly support students in their success goals, whether it is to advance, catch up, or be on track, classified under pending available funding? That said, who is going to support these students when it comes to their academic and personal needs if we just cut them off the table? Additionally, I want to add, with the concern of A through G courses, how are A through G courses going to be affected with the staffing model presented? And will crucial and needed, and I mention again, needed, courses like ethnic studies going to be affected by this? Because if we're going to be cutting off courses, are we cutting off the courses that you feel don't benefit students in the same ways as math and like reading, even though they both support students, just because we simply cannot afford it? That's the end of my question. Thank you.
Thank you both for that question. And I want to just remind everyone of what Vice President Huling's question was about, where she asked whether or not there's a second part to this process, and there is. So, what we wanted to present to you is the first part, which is the part of fully allocating our unrestricted general fund, which are the dollars that the district receives based on enrollment. The second part to this, which is why it says pending available funding, the second part to this is for us to go in and evaluate all of our restricted dollars, which some of those dollars are specifically for counselors and AP classes. So, we have to evaluate those dollars and then determine how much is remaining in those, in those funds so that we can then fund the next category of services that we do know our students need. You're absolutely right. And I look forward to you, to, for our next meeting, to make sure that I am held accountable to that. accountable to that. Thank you.
Thank you, student delegates. At this time, if you need to head home, um, please do. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Thank you. Commissioner Weissman Ward?
Thank you. Um, I think, so this is, we're still doing clarifying only?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, and if this is not a clarifying, I think it's clarifying, and you can tell me if it's not. I think one of the, it's related to, um, Vice President Huiling's question, and, and Dr. Sue, your response. I think one thing that's a little confusing about the pyramid is that some, it, some of the pyramid language is describing positions, and others is describing sources. And so I think I would be looking for something consistent, which is, we're either talking about positions, or we're talking about sources. But right now, it seems to conflate the two, and I think that it might be a source of, of confusion. And I do understand that part of it is that we haven't decided what the pending available funding, those positions that would, um, benefit from that available funding haven't yet been determined, but I, I think for me, that is part of my confusion. And I guess the other, so, but maybe just, can I, I, that would be my clarification on, on the visual.
Yeah, um, I think the only, I believe most of these are positions.
Yeah, but if you look at two, it's like SLAM CTE, grant-funded specific resources, discretionary funds, so it's, it's like the source of the funding, not the.
So, you're correct. So the SLAM CTE is actually talking about the FTE that you would allocate, allocated for, for librarians, arts, and PE. So those are FTE, but you're right. It's like, when we, the other way that we've also showed this is, the, whether the funding is discretionary, you know, like you're saying, fungible with resources versus FTE. So the pyramid doesn't quite pull that out. So the additional student services, that, those are all FTEs. Those would be reflected in a school site's budget as an FTE allocation. The number of APs you receive, the noon monitors and things like that. Same thing with the VVGGs, the base staffing. And you are correct, on the right side, or am I right? It, the only one that sort of is mixing resources with FTE is the SLAM, the Sports Library Arts and Music, but that's the PEEF SLAM monies that comes over to a site as an FTE. Then the grant-funded is going to be a resource, because that's the most discretionary monies for a school site, right? Those are grants that the school receives directly, either through Student Success Fund or other grants. So that will come to a school site's budget as an amount, because that's their discretion how to spend it. The site discretionary funds, I think we missed, we should have put non-FTE, so it comes over as an amount to spend on supplies, so. And then the focal student allocations would also be a pot of discretionary money that school sites would be able to, um, potentially hire additional staff to support the FTE that comes through the staffing model. Oh, okay. It just sounds like that wasn't clarifying. Which part? I said a lot. So I think what the thing is that the pyramid, I agree, there, there was, there's another chart that we can do that breaks it down more clearly, that says, so the way schools get their budgets traditionally is for certain positions, principals, teachers, clerks, you don't get an amount of money, you get an FTE allocation, right? So pretty much everything on my left of this is FTE allocations that would come into a budget. What you are, and then on the right side, the only one that would come through an allocation, an FTE allocation is the SLAM. And the rest are resources.
But I guess, and maybe it's also confusing, just because there's like, you know, there's two, I thought the numbers meant something, like one, two, three.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, I don't, okay, yeah.
Okay, because see?
That's helpful.
Clarify, thanks. Got it. And then the other clarifying question.
I think it was clarifying.
Took, took a minute to get there, but we're there. Um, is, and, and this is, I think this is clarifying, but, um, I, and, and student delegate, Montgomery brought this up, is, is, I still think that there's a question about, is this the appropriate base? And, 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 and why are counselors and social workers not included in the base? When I think of what is necessary to operate, and I may not use the verb operate, to have a school that is educating and providing safe and nurturing environments where our kids and our educators want to be, that list is not, is not it. So I think that's where I am on that.
Thank you for, for naming that. Um, and I, and I do think there's a, a question around the, the, even just the term base staffing, and, and I know that there was also a lot of, uh, reactions to the term keeping the lights on. And so, um, I will acknowledge, I know that we have our CDE advisors on the call right now. Yes, um, for this in particular, just because this is language I think we, we have pulled from CDE language. Um, if you do want to make a comment on that, Elliot and Pam, I think you are on the call right now. You are welcome to.
Excuse me. This is difficult to explain, and I want to give the staff some grace, because you are in transition from a site-based model where I think as Ms. Laus Smith was explaining, was give, specific positions were given to sites. So when we use the term base funding, it's really what are you statutorily and in accordance with your collective bargaining units required to provide at each site? That means a teacher in every classroom with a certain ratio, you need a principal to run the school, somebody to mow the lawn, somebody to turn the lights on, and, and a school secretary who's probably runs the school. The problem is, when you add all that together, it exceeds what is called your base LCFF funding. And let me just take a second to describe that. You get your local control funding formula from the state in separate pots. But basically, your base is about, I don't remember, it's 690,000, 90 million dollars, and then you have about another, and that is supposed to co, cover the cost of running the district. For many districts, that is all they get. They have, they don't get supplemental concentration, because it's based on what's called an unduplicated count, which are your foster youth, yours, your students, um, with economic, with economic, SED students, which, not SED, but socioeconomic below students, and your foster youth. And you get a certain allocation for every one of those. And in any, if you have over 55%, you get an extra allocation. Yours is relatively on the low side. So you are going into that money, which is supposed to go specifically to those student groups to pay for keeping the lights on. And I think that's why that language gets confusing. Then when you add in all the other funding sources that the district gets, which are many, many, and more than most districts get, that's what typically goes to, for you, a lot of the services, like social workers, like counselors, that are above and beyond your required number by either, those are not by statute, but they're by collective bargaining unit agreements, and your basic operating expenses. If you were looking at this as a business, it keeps the store open, doesn't pay for the advertising or things like that. So it gets very confusing, because these all come together. The bottom line is, you are operating at a deficit, and I, I think the most telling slide was, I think, the, what was it, Slide 7, the one with the, the second slide with the, um, green and yellow and the red line. You can go back to that. One, yeah, couple back, sorry. Uh, yeah, that one. Um, that means with, you are using up your beginning balance, so you have no ending balance in the 27th school year. That's, that's the crash point for a school district. Because CDE, California Department of Education, under law, looks at two things when they look at whether a district's solvent or not, and you aren't. Because in that year, you cannot meet your edu, your expenses, and it is very likely that you won't have cash. And that's when you have to go out and get a loan, and we don't really want to talk about that. I mean, we do, but we don't. If you get a loan, that's when you get, we're, we're all gone, and a trustee comes in and basically takes over the district. You don't have to get there. And I think the hard part about this is you are used to a lot of resources at your schools, and, um, typically, and I, I'm gonna bring this up, because it's a little bit of a sore point, and trustee Weissman Ward brought it up, or Commissioner Weissman Ward. Social workers are wonderful, but they are not generally part of a school allocation. I was a superintendent for 17 years. We did not have any social workers in the district, except those assigned to sped, until the 15th year of my superintendency. And that was only because we sought outside grants. You have really, and, and I don't mean to say you should feel it in any, I mean, that's the way it should be. Unfortunately, it's not really something that's covered in your base expenditures. So you have to look at everything in your base, and that's why, okay, I'm gonna stop there and come to one final thing, where they say, let me add one thing, please, because I think this is important. When you talk about funding being available, the school staff will not know where the budget stands until May. So availability means, um, what's left once you meet those base expenditures. I'm sorry to go on so long, but, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Duchan. I will say, I, and I want to be very clear about this. What we say as a district is sufficient for our students in our schools may just be different than what the state defines as a base allocation. That's not to suggest that we need to now be making decisions that are out of compliance or irresponsible financially. But I do think it's a, I do think it's an important distinction that be made about what we believe goes into a fully staffed, fully equipped school, that is different from a state definition of what is considered baseline for a school. And I, the reason I say that, and, and I, and I do think it's worth naming over and over again for ourselves and our community, is because I think that there is a very real reaction to things like what it means to keep the lights on in our school, and whether that is sufficient for what we believe our students deserve in this city. Now, again, I, I just want to be clear, that's not to suggest that we make rash decisions about our staffing, or that we believe that our allocations should be categorically different from what wonderful guidance we receive from the state. But I think there is, I, I do think that to Commissioner Weissman Ward's point, how we look at a school adequately serving our students is perhaps the most essential thing we can be discussing as a board. And, and so I do think that that conversation is critical when we're talking about what we mean by developing a staffing model that meets the needs of our schools. And so, without belaboring the point, um, you know, I, I know it wasn't a.
May I? I'm sorry to push back, I did this at last meeting. That model was developed at the advisement of us, because that is the model that you have to provide. Nobody in this room would say that we don't want a social worker, we don't want other mental health staff, we don't want other things at school sites. Every student in California deserves that, and so do your students. The problem is, you simply don't have the money. Until you go through the budget process, and you won't know it until May. And the distinction of base funding wasn't adequate funding. I never use the term adequate. And I want to be very clear, because this is, this is what I and Pam were brought into the district to tell you and, and your staff, you as a board, that you cannot overspend your money, because whether it's fair, just, or otherwise, if you do, you'll, you'll lose control of it. And, and I, I'm being brutally frank, because you are gonna be in for a pretty rough run until May. And you, if you don't plan for it now, I like to use the analogy of the tired things at the bank, you can't back up. So I, I'm sorry to be, if I'm being rude or even cruel, but you can only plan on what the state gives you, and then use the additional money.
Thank you. I'm gonna move to Commissioner Gupta for clarifying questions.
Thank you, President Kim. Um, so, I want to get a little bit of clarity on this pyramid, and Assistant Superintendent, I appreciate you trying to put this together, and I recognize that, um, certainly there's a pressure to produce something that we in the public can react to, and so, um, I recognize this is incomplete, but just to kind of get a broad brush stroke, because I think, I appreciate what Vice President Huiling asked, in terms of, you know, what, what you've allocated here, what's shared in the table seems to be how we get to the numbers at that, uh, base staffing level. If I just work backwards from the numbers, so if we have about 1.3 billion, uh, of a budget normally, and so we have to cut, you know, about 117 million, if I take that number back out of it, then we have about 1.18 million, oh, sorry, 1.18 billion left. And here, you have about 727, uh, point 2 million, which means that, if I'm understanding this correctly, from sort of broadest brushstrokes, that would mean for the top three layers of this pyramid, then just the math would say we have about 456 million or so left to be allocated. Would that be an accurate statement?
I, I can't say that the 456 million is an accurate statement, but the way you're describing it is, what we are only looking at is unrestricted, and we have a large sum of restricted funds to fund the top of the pyramid. So yes, and that's the work that we're doing now, is looking at our restricted resources, what the restriction is. Is it ongoing? Like, is it going to last for three years? Do we get it every year? That type of thing, so we can start assigning it to the top of the pyramid. So I won't say that the numbers are accurate, but I will say the way that you're describing it is the next step in our process.
How we would allocate something, and again, I'm not gonna hold you to the 456 million, but.
Thank you, because I've done a lot of zeros wrong and this wrong, so.
But I at least want to get in order of magnitude, as we think about these additional pieces that we absolutely, I think, you know, we hear from the community, and we all seek to be able to fund.
Yeah, and I, I would say, that I, we believe, and I know Dr. Sue believes, that the entire pyramid is the base, like, to us in an equity-centered district. And we are separating out with the support, you know, under the advice of our fiscal advisors to sort of map our resources, so that we can explain, like, maybe we can think about different terminology, if the entire thing is the base, how do we pay for the blue part of our base, or the green part of our base? So that's really the exercise that we're trying to go for, so that we know, say, for the VVGs, we have instructional coaches, we have a restricted resource that lasts for three years, we can get instructional coaches in our schools for three years, and at that time, we can look at our student outcomes and look for other resources for it. To really get us to better map our resources, so we have a more strategic plan versus, I mean, that's, that's kind of our goal. And so I think, I would say that categorically, that superintendent and all of the cabinet agree with all of the commissioners, that the entire pyramid is our base. And then there is semantics, which maybe we can talk differently about it, or describe it.
Well, and, and then also use that, so those six figures. Well, and then also use that, so those six figures mid, you know, four or 500s or whatever, whatever that is, in an equity centered way, as student trustee Langston had, had named. One, one other question I noticed on this, or one of my questions is, where, where are nurses in this pyramid?
Yes. So to the nurses, so we have nurses as part of the base that provides specialized healthcare services for students that have 504 plans. That's kind of the general education side of it. And then all of the nurses that provide specialized healthcare services on the special education through individual education places are really part of the special education contribution and funding. So we did not separate them out, because they're supported through, that is part of the special education funding. We can certainly break it out in the next iteration.
And for, I guess, a clarifying question on that, then is that only nurses associated with special education are going to be funded at that base level? Or what about nurses that are not necessarily allocated for?
Yeah, currently, we have the, we have, we have a, we have a large reliance on agency nurses to cover our specialized healthcare needs. So as we reduce our reliance on agency nurses, we were, we were looking at a different types of models for nursing. It is true, we have a, the wellness center model currently at some, most middle, middle schools and some high schools does include nursing services. That will put our costs higher than what we have. So we do have that built in, but we don't, we haven't currently found the funding for it.
Okay. One, one other clear, well, a couple of clarifying questions, but I, I know my, my colleagues. One, one of the other questions I have is, it sounds like you will be sharing a broader model of some sort. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we really need to break down so people can see, one, however we describe it, the allocation methodology. How did we get to how many teachers a, a, a school has, type of thing? How did, how, what's the decision on, does a school get a .5 social worker or a full-time social worker? So all of that allocation methodology needs to be shared. We have to be clear, like, what are the resources that we're using? So for instance, we still have dual funding from litigation, that successful litigation against the vaping companies. That will probably go, that goes to community health outreach workers. So we need to be able to share with people where the funding sources are as we know them. And also give that opportunity for people to say, hey, you forgot about this resource. Did you, you know, because we have lots of resources. So that is definitely the information we should be sharing.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I mean, and I, I'd certainly hope that, you know, we can be as transparent as possible, just given everything. I mean, I, I think it'd be great to get public eyes on just how the, how the assumptions are made and whatnot, so that everybody is as, you know, is, is as confident in this. President Kim, I, I have clarifying questions on the process by which sites are involved. But if we are sticking to this, I can hold those.
I think we all do. So why don't we come back to that question? So we can talk, as we talk about next steps, maybe towards the end of our conversation here.
That sounds great.
So thank you. And if I don't bring that up, please, please chime in and let us know. I'm going to have Superintendent Sue respond really quickly. And then we'll go to Commissioner Fisher to wrap us up with clarifying questions. And then we'll keep on.
I, I just wanted to, to remind commissioners that the restricted resources that we have have lots of different types of terms inside them. So some of our restricted resources are for two-year cycles or three-year terms. And so that's the very complicated process that we have to go through. So some of, you know, we actually see in the, the triangle, the pyramid here, something that's called CCSPP, which is the California Community Schools Grant. And a lot of our schools receive that, but they're on different cycles. And so it's, it requires us to have deeper conversations with schools and trying to make sure that those programs are going to, number one, are continuing to have funds, but then number two, figure out how to support those funds.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher? Clarifying questions for now, and then we will go into-
Trust me, I have two separate lists, so we're good, we're good. I'll save my grandstanding for later. Just kidding. First of all, Ms. Lausmith, thank you for being in the hot seat tonight. Appreciate it. Now you're our budget expert too. You're just like, during the pandemic, you were our public health expert. You know, you've been our operational expert. Thank, just thank you for all the hats you wear. I appreciate you. So, and, and Dr. Sue, you have stepped into the hornet's nest here with everything that we've just thrown onto your plate this year. And we knew some of these decisions were coming and we knew they were painful. And so thank you for leading us through them. Those weren't clarifying questions, so, sorry. I have a lot of clarifying questions about special education, though. Let's, if we could go, I think, is it slide 10 here? Mine is very, very small, but it's the graph. So, yeah, da, 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 da. So piggybacking on some of the questions earlier about the 802 versus 791, I see here for special education, we've got 209 plus 25.3, which is 235.1 million, but our SELPA budget is 231 million. So I'd love, our SELPA unrestricted general fund is $162 million. But then we've also seen it at 183 million, now 209. And plus, I don't know that we fully accounted for all the, the closed contracts, the $30.7 million that was deducted from NPS and NPA contracts. So just like, love to see a much more full accounting of special education, particularly last year's budget compared to this year's budget. We approved in May and June the SELPA budget. So I still would love to see our actuals compared to what we as a board told you, you have to do. No one has shown us that yet, so please and thank you. So I'd love to see from a clarifying standpoint, how that aligns with all of this. I think you answered some of my clarifying questions, though, about these funds, restricted versus unrestricted funds. And I, you know, I see the, in slide where it says not including supplemental and concentration grant. Thank you, Mr. Duchan, for some of that clarification. But I think my biggest clarifying question really is, we're not like a lot of other districts. One, we're a county and a district. So we've got county funds as well as district funds. We have a lot of, I appreciate, and Mr. Duchan, for reminding us that, you know, there are a lot of districts that don't get more than LCFF. Frankly, we do. Our school, our county values public education to the point where whenever we put any ballot initiative on the ballot, we get it funded. So we've got P funding, we've got QTEA, some of these I see here. But I don't see the student success funding. I don't see all of our grants. And so I'm, I'm, so if you could clarify for me, is that going to be in the, in the, in the, like, when are we going to actually get a breakdown that includes that? And I, I'll, I'll do, I have further questions about all of that a little bit later, too. But those are my clarifying questions.
So on the SELPA versus the special ed contribution, I don't know the answer to that this time, so I'll have to get back to you on that. I'm not sure if it's, I thought it was in addition to, but again, don't hold me to that. On the question about the student success funds and the grants, the, the student success funds, the, it's about 24 million that is coming over. They're direct grants to schools, so that's listed in the part of the pyramid under grants for schools. So that, that's at the school's discretion on how to spend those monies. So that's how they're identified. Same thing with the community partnership grant. The, the student success funds that come directly to the central office, that they're called district innovation funds. Those are right now funding for schools for the lesson study math pilot and some work with Ollie. So it will be showed in the bigger budget, but it isn't something that we look at for our base or the supplementals, since they're very restricted on the sources. Thank you for those clarifications.
And I realize I, I never ask my clarifying questions, but some of them have been answered. I do have, so going back to the table, I know that there's some work to clarify just some of the numbers that are there. But if I heard correctly, for example, a $20 million decrease in central services coming down to $80 million reflects a change in a year-over-year budgeting for, for central office staffers, correct? So this, so this, what we see here reflects not just the base, but it also reflects some change, strategic changes that are happening with budget allocations. Is that right? Okay. I think if that's the case, that I do find that this slide to be quite profound in telling us a lot about some, some things, including where our money is going for folks, for things like staff, principal, clerk, et cetera. But that is a, it is, it, what I don't want to get lost is the, is the changes that are being made year-over-year to help us meet the base, using language here, meet the base of this. And so, so I just wanted to clarify that. That is a decision to remove, to reduce our costs from presumably 100 million to 80 million that is not necessarily informed by a staffing model, correct?
On the central office side, that's correct. So the 80 million that's in the, that row represents a $20 million reduction. So current year, 2425, the unrestricted funds to the central office is in the amount of 100 million. This is based on saying that to the neck, for 2526, it will be 80 million for the central office.
Because I think there's a similar question to be had around the other line items that are not FTEs that are informed necessarily by a staffing model, but nevertheless may reflect changes in a year-over-year budget. So similar to Commissioner Fisher, this 235.1 million dollars for special education contribution, it begs the question, is that more or less from the year prior? And, I mean, well, you know this, but those changes, I think, are important to reflect in the table like this. Yeah, okay. I know that there are a lot of thoughts to share beyond now our clarifying questions. And so I am, I am open to taking feedback on how to best approach this conversation. But one, one part of me tells me that for the sake of time, given that we all have things that we want to say on our minds, I am totally fine putting a timer on for each of us to say what's on our mind as we do a whip around. It could be a question, it could be a statement, it could be you opining about things that you feel about the world. But if that's something that's okay, yeah.
President Kim was, was there, or Superintendent Sue, was there anything with regard to next steps that you wanted to share?
Oh, so sorry, see, this is why I knew I was going to forget it. And you had a clarifying question as well. So, okay, great. See, all the clarifying questions. Everyone has a clarifying question, okay.
So in terms of next steps, actually, Meli has been meeting with our site leaders and principals, providing them with clarity around what this means to them. We have actually also been working with our principals to train them up on using the new budgeting tool on frontline. So it is a lot to ask of our principals to do both of these things at the same time. But that is what we are doing, because that is the moment that we are in. We will continue to have those conversations with our site leaders and principals. And in the next board meeting on February 25th, we actually will be bringing to this board a list of proposals for separation, which is our reduction in force proposal. And then in March, on March 11th, we will be sharing our second interim budget, which will include our multi-year projection for how we are doing if we make these cuts for those out years. Once again, with the goal of maintaining solvency and having a healthy revenue, uh, reserve. After, and then in March, we will be hosting a family summit with all of our school site councils, where parents will have an opportunity to provide feedback to us on their, the larger, our larger local control funding formula budget. And then in May, we will hopefully have the governor's revised budget. And we will do some consolidation of that revised budget with our budget. And then hopefully in June, we will be sending a balanced budget to this body for full adoption. Meli, am I missing anything?
No, I mean, if there are, hopefully, we'll be doing more cohort meetings with the principals as well, the big meetings, and then they meet with their cohorts individually on a regular basis to talk about this.
I know there are some lingering clarifying questions. And so if we can go Vice President Heuling, Commissioner Alexander, Commissioner Gupta, and Commissioner Fisher, and then we'll, we'll do our two minutes of, you know, parting statements.
Thank you. One question I have is about cuts to the central office. And I'm wondering whether 20 million dollars is a, is what is represented as a cut in the understanding of the base needs of the central office? Or is expected to be the total amount cut from the central office budget? Because I recognize that it is really, it's a very large amount and it's going to affect a lot of people. But I also recognize that that is actually only 17% of the 113 million dollars. And so when we talk about keeping cuts farthest from students, that's actually a disproportionately smaller cut to the central office than to school sites, if that is indeed the maximum reduction that we expect from the central office.
Sure. The 20 million represents the reduction to the central office in the unrestricted side of funding. The central also, office also receives restricted funding. And we're working through that, so there will be cuts on the restricted side as well. Most notably, the learning and recovery monies that are now, I think it's about 35 million in the central office that we either have to find an alternative funding for or eliminate those positions. So that's the next work. So this is only representing the unrestricted.
Thanks. And the other thing I just want to kind of touch on is there's been a lot of references to the governor's May budget revise. And is it accurate to say that, like, this whole budget is based off of the assumption that the governor's proposed budget, which does not cut education, but, and only ever so very, very slightly increases the budget, not really keeping up with the increased costs that we have, but in absolute terms is slightly larger than last year, remains the same. And there's a lot of concern that with cuts from the federal government, with costs to rebuild Los Angeles, as the proposed budget was initially made prior to the fires, that we have to keep some flexibility because there are things in the governor's May budget revise that may be out of our control and that the proper place to put up that pressure for all of us and for the public is to our state legislators to not cut the state education budget. Is that?
That is accurate. We are hoping that the, the governor's budget does not change. We actually think this is the best that he can do, because their essentially status quo at this moment in time is the best. I, I am, we, we are thinking about what would happen if the federal, if, if we lose additional federal dollars. And that is unfortunately a contingency plan that we have to be prepared for. We are looking into our budget to determine how much federal grants we get. We do know a lot of the title dollars, the title funds, which are restricted funds, come from our feds, our federal government. We also know that there are some dollars for special education that comes from, from our federal government. If we have to make additional cuts to the federal government because of certain policies that's happening at the federal level, I don't, I don't even know how we can sustain that. It would devastate our, it would devastate this, this district. We get upwards of $50 million from the feds. There's just no way we will be able to sustain that.
I had an additional clarifying question. Well, two quick ones about what's in the keeping the lights on. So one question is why- So one question is why are AP preps in keeping the lights on? And my second question is does the transportation budget in there include general education buses? Like the ones that we keep hearing about in public comment that take kids from like outside of Guadalupe Elementary and send them to West Side schools? Does that make sense?
Okay, totally.
Sorry, they were two totally different questions, but they're just.
It was just a senior moment, sorry. The AP prep is included because remember, um, Mr. Duchan was saying what is in our collective bargaining agreements? And AP prep is part of it, so we put that into the base, the base allocations. It isn't to say maybe we can find restricted resources for it and move it out, but just knowing that that is uh, something that we have to account for. And then on the question of the general transportation, so yeah, so when you have students, I think we have buses that go to from, you said from the east side to the west side, right? We have buses, the general education buses includes all of the buses that are part of like the C tip and all of the buses that go from schools, maybe in the Bayview to Chinatown or on the west side. So they do include that the that monies. Excellent, right, I forget. But the bulk of the student transportation in that 29 million is special education. So it's about 6 million for the general ed and the remainder being special ed. And that's why when we give you the more detail, those things are broken out in it.
Commissioner Gupta.
So so I'm really happy to hear that communication has gone out to at least our site administrators. And you know, I I think that's great, obviously. You know, we we need to, we need to make sure that that we're on top of that. I'm curious, I know the the site budgets will not be out, sounds like for another few weeks or so, but is there guidance that uh, we can already provide for sites that have in the past used part of their PTA funds to fund additional positions? And how they have to treat those or not treat those uh, this time around?
Yes, um, we shared our kind of our current thinking about that guidance with site leaders. We had, um, today is Tuesday, yesterday, Monday, we had a series, I think of five meetings with, you know, how our our um, schools are broken up into cohorts. So we had a cohort, we invited principals from each cohort to come and we shared our best thing. We got a lot of feedback from them, good questions about how, we're calling it the supplemental hiring guide, like how do you use your student success funds or your PTA? So our plan is to go back, we have an admin institute next Wednesday. And so to go back and the next iteration and keep working with them. We are currently under a hiring freeze, which if I don't say that, Mr. Duchan will remind us. But our goal is to have that guidance ready. So when we are out of a hiring freeze, then administrators understand while they're thinking about their budget, what positions they can hire for and be ready to do that.
Is in and I'm again, I'm thrilled to hear that we're having those conversations with site administrators. I also recognize that um, part of the school site councils or parents that may not be part of those conversations. Is there anything that you might provide in guidance to school site council members uh, that they may not hear directly from the principal or you know, administrators are obviously busy? So is there anything else that we can share with them right now?
Oh, that's a good question. Um, yeah, I mean, we are meeting with the LCAP Advisory Committee tomorrow, and that is representative school site councils. And we do communicate, we can communicate with them directly. So yes, that's something we can do. And I can talk with uh, Superintendent Sue more about our plan and what we want to. We do wanna get the information finalized um, as much as possible. We also hope we have the March 8 summit coming up, so we are actually have that in our mind for a lot of sharing as well. As schools start doing their school site summits and spring planning.
Thank you. Commissioner Ray, and then we will start with our closing statements.
Thank you. I have a few clarifying questions, so I just maybe ask and answer unless you want me to give them all to you once. What would you prefer? Okay, sure, okay. Sure. So my first question is just to clarify. Is the staffing model that we're working with reflecting the enrollment at at each school? Reflecting the number of kids at each school or not? And like, in what way is that being handled? How we're determining staffing versus how many kids are in a school? My second question relates to central office, so there's a couple of questions in here. First, do we feel that 80 million dollars is sufficient, or at least on the unrestricted side, to cover our core needs? We've had a lot of problems with things like payroll and hiring and so forth. And we we need to make sure that we can actually run our most core business operations in order for our school system to function. We want like, we wanna be sure we don't have more empower fiascos. So and also related to that, with the reductions that are contemplated in central office, where does that put us vis a vis central offices elsewhere in the state? Essentially, like, does that put us on par with what most other school districts spend on their central administrative functions or above or below? Where is that? And then my last question relates to to the extent that you can um, explain or or can obtain the information. We do have three stated student outcome goals. And if if those are the core goals we're working to, how are we actually essentially working backward from that to figure out what we need to do in order to reach those goals? How how is that being reflected in our budgeting? Thank you.
I can answer some of those, some of them I might refer to Dr. Sue or another time or both. So on your question about the number of staff per school, it is enrollment driven. It's based on the number of students at the school at the 10-day count. So the current year enrollment of identifying the number of teachers per school. In terms of the 80 million, is it sufficient to meet our core needs? I mean, that is an eye that we're keeping, and I think Dr. Sue did mention it's it's the 20 million, but it's not, it's not 20 million for each department. So some programs may be ending and some other programs like our more core functions, payroll, business services, may not be experiencing as many cuts. So I will kind of say, like, I don't think any of us feels like this is sufficient for our schools or for our central office, but we are keeping an eye to how to ensure that our core services continue. In relation to other districts, I can't answer that right now. I think we could look at, you know, I know there's been a lot of um, analysis done looking at Long Beach and other school districts and how the central versus school site. And I can't remember, Commissioner Alexander, is it usually around 15, 20%?
Well, the the BLA report, when it was done, had us at 27% of our general fund, but that included restricted and unrestricted. I think we were down to 22% last year or something like that. But again, that's a question I'm gonna ask too. So I would love to use that same methodology. I mean, I know it's, that's pretty complex, but as as much as possible to use the same methodology. So we can again, track, we've been making progress in that area. So we should be able to say next year, because our peer districts were 18%. So I would like to know, are we, you know, below that, you know, are we at that level? And and I think the BLA would be happy to help. I mean, they kept offering, so if the Board of Supervisors were willing to put more time in, they they could help us do that as well.
Thank you. Can I just, oops. Can I just add that um, with the central office cuts, actually thinking back to the BLA report, there were um, recommendations for us to review all of our managerial positions as well. So within this uh, within this 20 million reduction, we are looking at that. So reducing managerial positions. I will say again, 20% minimum cuts across the board in central office. But there are certain programs or initiatives within central office and within divisions that we're asking folks to completely eliminate because we do not have the luxury of dollars to do it. And I believe that we can create better efficiencies by either coordinating our different units closer together or um, by aligning certain things that we're doing.
My last question was about the uh, the student outcome goals and how, if at all, we're working backwards to figure out what we need to do to achieve those goals.
I can just speak to a little bit on the staffing model. For the the student outcome goals, literacy and math and instructional coach was a big um, strategy for moving those outcome goals, which is why we have the instructional coach included in that. The whole child guardrail, which was centered around chronic absenteeism and moving that forward. That's why social workers, you see that since that's a big group. So it's drawing on the work that is currently happening around moving those goals forward within the staffing model. And I don't know if Superintendent Sue wants to add anything else.
I I don't have additional um, comments for that. I think once we have the final staffing model, we can then start mapping backwards to those goals. As you can see here, we do feel and and acknowledge that instructional coaches are crucial to making sure that we reach our literacy goals. We also know that math coaches are going to also be equally as crucial to reach um, our math goals. So these are things that we're keeping our eyes on to make sure that we find those those dollars to um, continue to have those positions.
As we wrap up here, um, I wanna start with Commissioner Weisman Ward. Just, I said two minutes, but I'm gonna reduce it to a minute and 30 seconds per person to stand on your soapbox and say whatever it is that you need to say. But for 90 seconds, thank you.
I'm gonna do it in under 90 seconds, because I don't know about most of y'all, but I think a lot of us have to work in the morning. So I I think one of the things I just want, this is in response and and pushback, but maybe pushback to our CDE advisors or just maybe a response. We know we have a budget crisis, we know that. I don't think any of us are living in a fairy tale land where we don't think that's the reality. We also know that we have to make cuts. We also know that the cuts are gonna feel bad, we know this. This is not anything that I don't think, I think none of us are in denial about this. So the and and the idea that, you know, many schools operate just with this base, that is fine. But to Commissioner Fisher's point, I mean, it's not actually fine, but to Commissioner Fisher's point, that is not our reality. We do have extra funds and and we do have extra resources. And so I think we need to be really, really intentional about how and why we are choosing to spend them beyond the fact that we're in a budget crisis and that this may be a base somewhere according to the state. And one of the things I I encourage us to think about is maybe approaching this not from a race to the bottom model, but maybe a harm reduction model, which is we know this is gonna hurt. How can we engage in a thoughtful and efficient way of thinking about how to center our students and minimize how bad this is going to feel? So I, the framing of this, I've been thinking about sort of from a harm reduction space is is where I would like us to to continue to focus. 90 seconds. Dang.
No, I mean, I I think I just have more questions at this point, so I I look forward to the budget. And thank you for for being in the hot seat right now.
I'm gonna try really hard for the 90 seconds. I'll talk fast, sorry to our interpreters. We are a district and a county office. So when we talk about cutting the central office, we have to be super careful there. We have a lot of programs, to Superintendent Sue's point, um, that we have the obligation to do as a as a county board. Our schools that our student delegate Montgomery mentioned, our continuation schools, those are actually county schools. And in fact, if you look at the counties around us, San Mateo, Marin, others, there are special education programs and classes in schools that are run out of those counties that frankly would save us a whole lot of money that we're spending right now sending kids to non-public schools. I would just wanna refer us to the consent calendar. Line 13, summary of fiscal year-to-date contracts for professional services suffer consultants. That's 131 million dollars. And to Commissioner Gupta's point earlier about nurses, there are two contracts on there just to pick on our nursing and and staffing. Emergents Health is 1.4 million, Row Health is 1 million. How amazing would it be to hire those folks internally? We contract out with um, agencies for other services. How amazing would it be to hire those staff internally and save that money instead of contracting out? We had public comment about union busting to that point. I wanna make sure that as we're moving forward and we're looking at reducing budgets, we're actually looking at what we can do to bring staff back in-house. So and to follow up on Commissioner Weisman Ward's point, thank you very much, this is my last point, I will wrap up. To be student-centered and goal-centered with our investments, our third grade reading goal. There's research that shows that it takes four times as long to intervene in fourth grade as it does in kindergarten because of brain development to teach a kid to read. So when we have grants and we have resources and we have other things out there that we could be investing in our elementary schools that will save us money and help with this budget later, for the love of God, we need to be doing it. I'll stop there.
Johnson, can you give me a minute and a half? I'm sorry, Mr. Steele, can you give me a minute and a half, so it'll help me keep track?
I can only do one-minute increments on here.
That's fine. Yeah, why don't we do one minute? Yeah.
Sorry. I'll do the minute, how about that?
Thank you, I appreciate it and my apologies. I would like to second what Commissioner Fisher had said about finding ways to do things in uh, in a more sensible and smarter and efficient way. For instance, just looking at the numbers that were given on this chart we all talked about a lot, the special education contribution here is very close to the amount we're paying for all TK to 12 classroom teachers. If we intervened earlier and addressed these issues earlier, we could do so much more for all of our students, both for our special education students and for other students, for our schools and school communities in general. It would help everybody. So the other thing I wanted to talk about briefly is how important I think it is to work on restoring trust and transparency in the district and making sure that the materials that we're presenting to the public are understandable by the board, by sites, by the general public is super important. And I know it takes extra time and it's difficult, it's a difficult, difficult task. But the way that we communicate people with people has to be clear and accurate so that folks will trust what we're doing. And we have, you know, as as much as we can, we need to be clear and transparent and honest with people. And a lot of these things are gonna be extremely difficult. But in every crisis, there are also opportunities to make changes that will benefit us. And sometimes we have to, you know, sometimes we have to reach some difficult places before we're willing as a community to make those changes because people get used to doing things the way that they've always been done or get used to what they know. And I'm hoping that we can come out of this better and with a stronger focus on student outcomes. Thanks.
Building on what Commissioner Ray was just talking about, I wanna start by um, also thanking Ms. Lousmith and apologizing if it, our earlier interaction seemed in any way like a gotcha. I was, I didn't intend for it to be that way and it was um, just, I was confused. And but I think to the to your point, I think we've gotta make sure that the information we're presenting is accurate. And and I guess I would ask the team, if you all, when we talk about budget, I just think we need, I don't expect any one of you to know everything, but can we have the people in the room who can answer the question? I mean, if we can, you know, because that's, we need to be able to have a real conversation about the numbers, understand where they came from and and make sure they're accurate. And if there's a mistake, it's all good as long as we can correct it. I think that's the issue is the people weren't here to to give us the information to correct it. And so and because these are, these are big numbers that are being put in these buckets, right? Like the question I asked about busing, there's that 6 million dollars is being spent on general ed busing. Is that really more important than social workers? I don't know, but I mean, that's a conversation that at least that the Board of Education ought to be able to have, right? So um, anyway, that's my request moving forward. Um, and then my comment, I guess, is just, um, as several colleagues have said, this has to be connected to student outcomes. I mean, that's our responsibility as a board is to not support a budget unless we are convinced that it's gonna advance our goals. And so it needs to be, uh, even though we're making these cuts, it needs to be harm reduction and it needs to be, we need to be convinced that we're moving toward our goals and meeting our guardrails, including guardrail one. our guardrails, including guardrail one, around meaningful consultation. So 1:42, almost, almost.
And thank you, I didn't think you got, you were doing it and I gotcha. I appreciated that.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your work on this. I know, I know this was a lot of.
Like I said, I don't want to make excuses, it should have been better and I just started this project a week ago.
I know, that's why.
It was a little bit, a lot.
That's why I want to say something too, because I know you jumped into this at the last minute, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I second everything that my fellow commissioners have said. And, you know, I always think about something my dad would always say, which is, show me your budget and I'll tell you what you value. And I think that that is so, so true here and that's what you're hearing from a lot of us. Obviously, I think we all understand that it is imperative that we adopt a balanced budget, but because of the depth of the cuts, this is also an opportunity for us to have some transformative leadership around what we value, what we are going to invest in, what we are going to unfortunately have to say goodbye to. And we need to really think about every single decision that we are making. I know it's really difficult to be putting this budget together in honestly completely unprecedented budget times with everything that's going on at the state and federal levels, but that's not an excuse for just cutting for cutting sake and overlooking the reality of the people and the programs that are benefiting from that budget and those investments. And so I think this is really an opportunity for us to explain to the public our vision for where we are going. Like this is a reset for us to have a sustainable district and we also need to convey the vision that is behind this because the vision is not just cutting to the bone and satisfying the state. The vision is having an education that is worthy of the students of San Francisco.
Thank you, Malley, you're, Ms. Law Smith and, and Dr. Sue. You know, I, what, what I want to be really clear on is, is in the, in the many conversations we as a relatively new board have had, I would hope that both the public and the state hear very clearly that we are ready to make the necessary decisions to bring forward a balanced budget and finally receive a positive fiscal certification. I don't think that's a question in our minds. But I also want to communicate that we are asking a lot of our community to put their trust in us. We are putting a lot of trust into our staff and our superintendent. And I would ask the state to also trust us and recognize the shifts that we are making as a body to really follow through in the commitments that we put forward. And I, and I say that with all due respect to our CDE advisors and the state who have been really instrumental and helpful in getting us to where we are. And it, it's, it's so clear to me that we are asking so much of our educators, of our staff, of our families, of our communities to put faith in, in a system that has hurt them and that will continue to frankly hurt them through these cuts and that we are ready to make the necessary decisions, to make the hard decisions. I would hope that we have that same level of trust from our city, that same level of trust from our state and that same trust in our superintendent to be able to move this work forward. And so I, I really, I, I, I can't underscore that enough. And I'm really grateful for both staff and state and our city for being able to have this conversation, to even argue about restricted funds. Like that is very clear, but I, I, I think it's just really important to communicate that to, to everyone who is listening. And so thank you. I, I think we're well past our time. So that being said, I realize I don't have my script in front of me.
We can move on to item G, the consent calendar.
Great.
We, we can, do we want to move to after 10? It's going to take us a few minutes.
Yes, sorry. Can we do a quick roll call vote if I motion to extend our meeting past 10 o'clock?
Do I have a second on President Kim's?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second, it's our.
Got it. All right. On extending the meeting past 10, Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Hewling.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward.
Yes.
President Kim.
Yes.
All right, we're moving on past 10.
Moving on to consent calendar G, motion and second to bring forward the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent? None?
No, there are none.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta.
Yes.
Vice President Hewling.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward.
Yes.
President Kim.
Yes.
Seven of us.
Thank you. Moving on to H1, we've attached to the agenda is the quarterly report on the Williams complaints. So just to acknowledge that. Item I, board member reports, are there reports from board members on either any membership organizations or other advisory committee and appointments by commissioners? Seeing none, I adjourn tonight's meeting at 10:09 PM.